Our regularly scheduled work session, October 27, 2020. Thank you all for being here this evening. We have a fairly busy agenda, so we'll jump right into it. We have a couple of items to add on, but before we do any of that, I'm going to ask the town clerk if she will call a roll.
Mayor Marshburn.
I'm present.
Mayor Proton Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. And since this is a work session, we will dispense of a couple of preliminary items. The next item is for the council to adopt the agenda, but before I ask for a formal motion on that, I should mention that the town manager has asked that we include a closed session at the conclusion of a regular agenda in regards to a personnel matter. I believe it's general statutes 143-318-...I believe that's a 1A6. Does that sound right, either Ms. Attorney or...I'm pretty sure that's the correct citation. If not, she'll correct me on that.
Yes, 143-318.11A6.
Eleven. I couldn't read my own writing. Thank you. Okay, and then also, I believe, maybe another site, Mr. Manager, you're requesting, is that right, for a legal issue?
Correct.
Okay.
Potential litigation.
Do you have the site for that?
And that one, it's the same section of state law, subsection A-3.
Okay. All right, so council, you have those two add-ons, closed session. So with those changes, I would entertain a motion that we approve the agenda.
So who?
Second. Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, no opposition. Thank you. All right, item C, first formal agenda item, is under presentations, and I believe...let me see, John, were we going to go ahead and do this now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Mr. Banford and Ms. Griffin.
Yeah. Introductions of some new planning staff. We're always pleased to welcome new folks, so come on up and let's have the introductions.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. The Planning Department welcomed Brian Godfrey to our team back the 1st of September. He's filling the vacancy of planning technician, and he's going to be working with us on reviewing zoning compliance permits, doing some GIS mapping, and some other things. And we're very excited to have him, and he'd like to say a few words.
All right, please, come on up, Mr. Godfrey. We're pleased to hear from you, and congratulations for joining our Town of Garner staff, and we look forward to coming to know you, and wish you a long and successful tenure with our town.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor and council. Again, I am Brian Godfrey. I'm the planning technician focusing on long range and zoning. As David mentioned, I'll be doing a number of different projects, including supporting the Planning Commission and UDO rewrite. I'll tell you just a little bit about myself very briefly. I am originally from the Charlotte area, but I've actually been coming to Garner my whole life. I've got family who've been in Garner a long time, so very happy to finally officially join the community here. I just graduated this past May from UNC with my master's in city and regional planning, where I majored in land use and environmental planning. So I'm learning a lot. I'm interested in learning more and hearing from you all about what your vision for Garner is down the road, so feel free to give me a call anytime. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Hopefully, he won't mind me mentioning, some of us think he has a pretty famous uncle in our town, but at any rate, and some of us know him and see him on a fairly regular basis, Richard Godfrey, who's a dentist in our town, been here for many years.
That's his uncle?
It is, yes.
Oh, okay.
Good man.
So thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Stacy.
So I have no famous uncles that I know of, but there's also another new employee. We welcomed Derek Applewhite as well, about two weeks, two and a half weeks ago now. So Derek is also a planning technician. He is the new position that was funded starting October 1. So he has joined us, and he will be focusing primarily on residential building permits and certificate of occupancy inspections. And if you call the planning main number, you will likely get Derek, and he will be sitting up front with inspection staff behind the counter. So if you come in through the front door, you'll also see him sitting up there as well. And he has a few words to say.
Please. Welcome, Mr. Applewhite. We're pleased to have you.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. I appreciate the opportunity for you all to let me introduce myself. Stacy mentioned, my name is Derek Applewhite, Jr., born and raised in the Cleveland community in Johnston County, so right down the road. But I'm very grateful to be with the Town of Garner and the Planning Department. Over the past couple of weeks, I've learned so much from the very intelligent and wholesome people in the Planning Department and Development Services, and I look forward to learning a lot more along the way. As Stacy also mentioned, I'll be right there at the front counter, so you'll be greeted by my smiling face, along with Kim and Colleen in there. But thank you all so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Applewhite. And I might just note, if you need a good smile, maybe that's a good place to go in the morning time or whenever, but whether you have a famous uncle or not, and you probably do, I just don't know who they are. So that's wonderful, yes.
I'll leave the famous uncles to Mr. Brian. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Welcome. We're glad to have you, sure enough. It's always great to have these new staff members introduced. Okay, anybody else new tonight we're recognizing? No? Okay. Okay. All right, we will now go to item D on our agenda, I believe, and we have a very important presentation, discussion to make, as it relates to public workspace needs assessment, project update, and Mr. Roy Lance, I believe, is leading this particular session. So welcome, Mr. Roy Lance.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I wanted to just give a brief introduction before I turn it over to the consultant that's been helping us through this project. You all probably remember, this is a study that we came to you all and initiated a while back, that was to look at primarily the public works facility, because that's one of our town facilities that now has been the longest time without some attention and needs it with their growth. But it also includes the possibility of long-term space for general file storage in the event that the Pearl Street Building were to be reused in some other way, as well as the needs of the police department to enhance their evidence storage facilities as well. And of course, there's some possibility that all those things could be co-located, or they don't necessarily have to be, but it made sense to sort of study them all at the same time. You all approved the funding, and we moved forward with the project, but when we started, it was in the middle of the worst part of the COVID, you know, the peak of COVID, and also the revenue uncertainty that went along with that time. And so even though the full funding was there, we made the decision internally to move forward with the first two of five phases of the project, let them get underway. That would give us a little bit of time to see what the revenue situation was like and make sure that it made sense to continue. So they have finished those first two phases and are here tonight to give you a report, just the understanding that there's, you know, a lot more to go. All of this entire process is somewhat preliminary, and we're at the preliminary stage of a preliminary process. But thought that since we were at sort of a natural breaking point, it would make sense for them to come and give you an update on the work that they've done so far. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mark Humany. Mark is here, he's with the IBI Group, and he is the project manager and the lead on this project, and he will introduce some of the rest of his team when he gets up.
Very. Thank you, Mr. Roy Lance.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council this evening. Good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
Matt did cover some of the introductions that I had on the slide, so I'll try to skip through that to the extent that I can. I am here representing a tag team of two companies. I am with IBI Group, and the second company is Withers Ravnell. I'm the project manager, Mark Humany. So part of this key consulting team is John Caliendo and Keith Pugh. John's with my company, IBI Group, just up the road in Raleigh. Keith is with Withers Ravnell. Keith and Johnny were both instrumental in the space needs, what we call architectural programming portion of the study. Jason Bertino is a civil engineer with Withers Ravnell and was responsible for the site analysis of the Public Works campus. And Ola Firm is the director of our Raleigh IBI Group office and has provided overall So the objective, obviously, was to perform a space need study of public works facility, but as Matt indicated, that it also included the town records storage, as well as the police evidence storage. We were looking at projecting the space needs 20 years out from today, so through the year 2040. It may or may not be what you might build, but we wanted at least make sure we gave it a good, long look ahead, so that we're not short-sighted, that if you were to realize in facilities 10 years from now, you're not short of space again. The timeline is, we were authorized to start this study back in June, and we completed that the first couple of steps in September, and provided a draft report, got great feedback from the town staff, and updated the report in October, and here we are to kind of give you the highlights. So what we had proposed was a five-task work plan. We've actually accomplished the first two, so we've done the facility assessment and the data collection side of the project. We've done the architectural programming. That's, again, us identifying what your space needs are in a quantitative and a qualitative manner. So we looked at two images on the left-hand side, there are the Public Works campus on Rand Mill Road. The other is, of course, your town hall complex with the police evidence storage in the far upper right-hand corner, and then the Pearl Street Storage Building, where town records are collected. That's off of, that's the lower right-hand corner image. So our team reviewed these properties, we reviewed the facilities, we looked at the facility condition assessment reports that the town had commissioned last year from another company, took a really good look at these. I'm going to show you some of the images, kind of tell you what we saw. Perhaps all of you are familiar with these facilities and the site, but if not, just a handful of images. So what we're finding is, on the main Public Works campus, you've got a collection of miscellaneous types of buildings, ranging from 30 to 40 years of age. They have basically reached the end of their useful life. They have a variety of maintenance and upkeep issues, not the least of which are leaking roofs, leaking windows, severely corroded metal on roofs and walls in some of the facilities. But overall, it's sort of a menagerie, anything from wooden utility sheds to metal sheds to pole barns to masonry buildings, masonry buildings with steel roofs, some with wooden roofs. But the facility condition report indicated that by 2025, these facilities are essentially in what they call a poor condition, whereas the cost to maintain and repair the facilities is reaching 30% of the actual building value, and it kind of teeters on a critical need for replacement. Some of the other issues that we saw with the buildings is a lack of life safety systems, and even some equipment safety concerns. So life safety, none of these buildings have sprinkler protection, fire sprinklers. They don't have fire alarms. They have, they're pretty light on emergency egress lighting and adequate exit signs. So there are some life safety issues. Generally, the property is overcrowded. It's very difficult to maneuver large vehicles, and the modern-day 21st century fleets are getting larger. They require a lot of room to maneuver safely, without hitting other vehicles, without hitting other equipment, without hitting buildings, and most of all, without hitting staff. The upper images there, the first one upper left is your, what they call Public Works Building A, that's the Public Works Administration, and there's a small storage component to that, like a small warehouse. Building B is the next one to the right, that's your fleet maintenance. Fleet maintenance is far too small of a building to maintain large equipment and vehicles that, again, form a 21st century modern fleet. It's got six bays. Every one of those bays are too short, too narrow, and there's not enough height in order to do some critical maintenance items. So surprisingly, the image right below, right in the middle of this slide, shows the image inside of that fleet building. It's incredibly well organized, it's very clean. You walk in there and you think, wow, this is a brand-new building. Credit to the staff for maintaining itself. So it looks great, but it kind of belies the fact that it's really insufficient for accommodating, like I said, a fleet, the modern fleet that the town has and will grow into over the years. There's also a fuel station out there on the site. Facilities such as this require a lot of yard storage space. There's all manner of vehicles, spare vehicles, things going to, for surplus, there's materials, brine processing equipment, dumpsters and bins, collections of products that are used throughout the town, such as recycled carts. All of those require a lot of land area. This site is short on land area, at about just shy of 13 acres. Couple of images on the bottom there are of the warehouse, such as it is. It's really just a small room off the administration building. Again, it's kind of overcrowded with materials at this point, no room to expand or to grow on this site. These are a couple of images of the police evidence storage building that is out back behind the town hall here. It doesn't have any of the essential program elements of a police evidence facility. It's made of wood. It's quite small, it's made of wood. It doesn't have any backup generator. Should anything cause a spark or a fire, the police evidence is gone. Should the power be lost to the refrigerated specimens, again, potentially a problem there. So it's, it needs a wash facility, it needs a canine kennel storage, it needs a vehicle processing facility, and it needs a proper sequence of spaces to hand things off in proper protocol. Pearl Street Storage, I think the images kind of speak for themselves. The sooner the town could transition to digital storage, perhaps the better. But right now, you've got a lot of physical records there, and it's just out of space, and it's a little bit...I think the town's doing their best to organize it, but there's a lot there. It goes back decades, and more to come. So here's what we found in listening. We were in a listening and a data gathering mode during conducting programming interviews, actually talking to the leadership, all the way on down through staff, trying to understand what do they have now, what's working, what's not working, what do you think you'll need, where are the growth areas, what are some of the inefficiencies, and how can we solve them? To tally it all up, there's a chart there at the top. The bottom is just sort of one snapshot summary. I recognize that it's a little bit too small to read all of that, but there's a lot of spreadsheet analysis and a lot of numbers crunching, but I just put together that little chart up at the top there that indicates that you currently have about 33,000 square feet of built space for your public works facility. And what's being projected, at least initially, when we're just in that listening mode through 20 years out, is 228,000. So we're talking about a seven-fold increase in square footage. You've currently got about 13 acres, based on what we're seeing, if we built the police evidence and the town clerk storage, minimum 20 acres, and I want to stress, minimum. That would be an ideal rectangular site, nice and flat, no easements, no waterways, just everything perfect. It could take maybe 25 acres. 50 staff now, plus or minus or few, about four times that number is projected out, 208 staff or 200 staff, sort of round numbers. Parking spaces are growing also by about a four, four and a half factor. Record storage, based on what they have now versus just looking at what they want to store, it's also about a factor of four. The police is maybe a factor of two, is what they see, in terms of existing square footage versus new square footage. So the biggest number that jumps out at me is 228,000 plus. If you add up all the square footages, it's, you know, currently sitting at about 240,000 square feet. That's a first pass, and we just went there and, again, asked everybody, tried to get a lot of good input from day one. What we see is your primary options is purchase a new site, again, minimum 20 acres, build all new facilities, build them sustain, with sustainable materials and methods, build them to be durable, low maintenance. You want to optimize your adjacencies and optimize efficiencies, which will pay dividends every day of operation. It is the most costly approach, but it's also the least disruptive to your ongoing operations. A second primary option would be to expand your current public works site and construct a couple of new buildings, and renovate and expand some existing facilities, perhaps in a phased methodology. If you were to purchase maybe five or six acres, you could probably build a new vehicle maintenance facility and then kind of stair-step the maintenance, I'm sorry, the renovation, repair, and expansion of the other facilities afterwards. That is a less costly approach. It's also extremely disruptive. It's not, it's something that can be done, because we, our company has done this for other public agencies, but there is, you know, trying to carry out day-to-day public works operations in the middle of a construction site can be a bit hairy. So this is just an aerial image of what you've got with the Rand Mill Road Public Works campus. You can see the park at the very north of that. There's private property, the tree and that water area just to the left of that. The facilities themselves are all sort of gathered into the middle, close to Rand Mill Road. When I, we looked, we had Withers Ravnell kind of look at what are the potential expansion areas of that site, they found about not quite two acres to the north and a little over five acres possible property to the west. So I think the town might want to consider looking at those, or, again, the primary option, maybe the best long-term option, is to develop a brand-new site and repurpose your existing facilities here, either sell it, help finance the project, or, again, repurpose them for other town needs. So next steps, where we see we go from here, that 240-some-odd-thousand square feet in the program, I think we're going to get back together with staff, the leadership of the staff, and we're going to work on consolidating and getting that square footage down, because you try to build that much square footage, it's just going to become a very big chunk of money. But I do think that we can find opportunities to share certain spaces, so that not every department has their own emergency operations center, not every department has their own break room, their own showers and lockers. We share these facilities, and when we start laying things out, even conceptually, I think it can help the different departments see, oh, you know, I'm in the same building as this group. We can share that set of conference rooms, we can share these lunchrooms, we can share these crew spaces. Also, we want to dig a little bit harder about prioritizing needs versus wants. With that, I think we can get that square footage down to a more reasonable number, and then we can start talking about, well, what is it we really want to fund, and what is it we just want to plan for in the future? So maybe you build for a 2030 program, but you make sure you've left space on the site for the 20-year, 2040 build-out. We mentioned at the outset, we have a five-step work plan. Certainly like to take on those next three steps, which involve cost estimating, figuring out a timeline, doing what we call a parametric analysis to help the town identify ideal locations for where to put such facility, taking kind of a lot of different information that we write algorithms for, and then, of course, we follow that up with a final report. And as far as next steps for the town, I think you all could look at what are your options for purchasing a 20 to 25-acre property, the potentially zoned industrial. You can look at the properties adjoining your current Public Works campus and see what opportunities really lie there, and consider what other town-owned properties that might be available, perhaps for the police or the town records, if not for Public Works.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Interesting report, and still some other matters with it. I believe ultimately, and I'm not jumping to this first, but I believe ultimately, the action asked for tonight is to provide feedback and give some direction as to whether to proceed with the rest of the study. So council be aware of that. I'll open it up for questions at this point in time, there may be several, so I'll start with Ms. Behringer, if she has any questions or comments.
Not initially.
Okay. Mr. Singleton, to my left.
You know, when I went through reading the options that you had, and of course, I know you already find the numbers, you know that Wake County's a growing area, and finding 20 or 25 acres, that's even close to the center of town is next to impossible. That'll be cost prohibitive, we'd have to get away on the edge of town. As I looked at what you stated here and then reading the options, you pretty much definitely suggest getting the fleet shop and the maintenance and fueling, washing facilities to be constructed elsewhere. Even if you purchased a property beside here, you still think it's a good idea to get that moved away to separate it?
It's not so much to separate. I think your daily operational efficiency, which really does translate into dollars, is to keep these facilities close by to each other. We did have conversations with staff about maybe just buying a 10-acre site and moving a few facilities there, but somewhere else down the road. But we've seen this, the town is not really large enough to conduct satellite facilities cost-effectively at this point. So if it's immediately adjacent, going back to that site, if it was immediately adjacent to all the other facilities, I think the key facility that's needed is a fleet maintenance facility. And I would put that on the new property that's purchased, so that the town can continue to maintain its fleet at its current facility. And when the new facility is completely up and running, then you move out of that, and maybe you repurpose that fleet, the old fleet facility for a warehouse or workshops or something. That building, given that it's masonry and steel roof construction, I think still has some years on it. It's going to take some money to refurbish it. I think the Public Works Administration building with a wooden roof and a lot of leakage problems, that one's probably less valuable. But that's what I would do, is I wouldn't separate it too much, just move it immediately off-site.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll have a second round if we need to. Mr. Matthews.
Sir, good presentation. The, I like the concept, what you're looking at, is the location out there is somewhat ideal, in fact, we can expand that out by acquiring more properties. I was looking at the map here. If that's the route we chose to go, by acquiring those additional properties, so we keep it all on one campus, so to speak, do we have enough land out there to handle all of our potential growth, in your opinion? We are growing, and like Greg said, 25 acres somewhere else in town, you're just not going to find. And either side, as we're going in, I know to the left, there's space, and there's to the right, so in that area out there, is there enough land available potentially to do what we want to do here and do it right?
Having designed Public Works operations facilities for 20-odd years, one thing I find is that those departments are really good at making do.
Mm-hmm.
You give them anything, and they'll make it work. So is it ideal? No. If you had 30 acres and all brand-new facilities, and everything was spread out, and you had a great place to grow, you know, then year 2041, you'd say, oh, we've already thought this all out, we've already got the property, let's just build it. That's ideal. But if you added, say, this is about six acres to your current, almost 13, you've got 19 acres, could that sustain the town through the year 2040? Possibly. I think it's, and even if it doesn't get all of the wants and doesn't have everything that everybody would want, I think it would be a huge improvement over what you have, and I think it would be workable, and I think the Public Works staff could work with it. But I wouldn't want to speak necessarily for Forrest and his group. One thing that that site lacks is really good vehicle access to a thoroughfare. Like ideally, if you could get from that property right to 50 without going through residential streets, that would be better. Right now, you're going through Rand Mill Road, so no matter how much you expand this, until you can find a sort of another access to a thoroughfare, it does have that limitation. But it is well-located, we think. There's a parametric analysis that we can do to show what the ideals are, but will there be property there? will there be property there? Maybe not. Or if the property's there and it's zoned business use, is it affordable? You know, maybe not. But it's not a bad location, except for the access.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, if we acquired more land adjacent to the property, that would give us, I don't say an ideal scenario, but a great opportunity for future expansion or do what we need to do now?
Yes. That's the short answer.
Okay. As good as you can get, I guess.
There you go, Phil. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We can double back. I like your term making do. I think Forrest sitting back there would agree that his department's probably been done a pretty good job of making do over the years. I remember having a conversation with him, I think it was at least a year ago, maybe more, and briefly talking about the fact that there was going to be certainly some more space needs and it wasn't that far away. So this is all coming to fruition, I guess, and so we're getting ready for that. Okay, I'll go back to this side, Mr. Vance and then Mr. Dellinger.
Oh, yes, sir. I echo what Councilman Matthews said, a very good briefing. And in reference to the options that are being proposed going forward, going through the, the process, will all of the three options be developed to the same level so there could be a price comparison?
What we had been tasked with doing by the time we had gone through various proposals back and forth as a town was just to develop two options, rather than the, the third. The third option was going to be split the sites and maintain two different facilities ongoing manner. But again, after conducting a lot of interviews and discussions with the staff, that did not seem like a viable option. But again, it was something that was taken out of the scope at the outset, just focus on these two options.
On those two?
I labeled them primary because the town, perhaps will have more creative ways or other ways to think about how to tackle this that we can't necessarily come up with ourself. We've seen things from, you know, buying some vacant building, industrial building somewhere and then saying, okay, that's your new warehouse for, oh, that's your new public works building. Or outsourcing something so that it's no longer a town-run service. There are those kinds of solutions out there, but again, the primary ones is all we've been tasked with developing is, is just these two.
Okay. I have no questions at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger.
Thanks for the presentation. I kind of look forward to seeing your recommendations for sites and locations because if this is a plan to go, you know, to 2040 and then beyond, the growth areas of Garner are going to be, I mean, 540 is supposed to open to traffic in 2023 or 2024, and there's plenty of land there in that direction. And so the, the center of Garner in terms of areas needing to be serviced is going to shift to the south. And so I think that's sort of, when you're looking at 2044, looking at where the infrastructure needs are, where all the, you know, services that need to be provided to be most centrally located and also easy access. So you talk about being maybe north of 540 somewhere so that you can take 540 to get out of 401, go up to Auburn, come straight up 50 to go, you know, I think this site, if you look at this site and look at 2040 and then say, what are we going to do the next 20 years?
Right.
When we get up to 120,000 people, we'll be looking for a site.
Right.
I also have a little hesitancy about expanding this site, given its location and proximity to residential neighborhoods. Those are sort of my thoughts as far as just the locus of growth for the town over the next 20 years. The only other thing was the confirmation on the public works service system summary. It says there's no fire suppression or alarms in that building at all.
Correct.
Is that something we can remedy or need to remedy immediately? I'm asking.
I mean, it can be. I don't know at this stage if it would be worth the cost of trying to introduce, say, fire suppression, but a fire alarm system, certainly.
Or some fire extinguishers or something.
Making sure you've got proper emergency lighting and exit signs throughout. I mean, those are things that are readily achievable with not too big of an outlet. But I do want to point out, what you said at the outset is, is very significant. And although I did answer yes to this gentleman, that, you know, if we're not talking ideal, you know, can public works department make do for the next 20 years if they were to purchase both of those pieces of property or more? Yes, they could make do. Is it ideal? No, for a variety of reasons which you just mentioned.
Ms. Behring?
Yes. The two pieces of property you identified that could be purchased, are they available?
I'll defer to, to Matt, if you would, address that. I cannot say.
I mean, we, over the years, we have had some conversation with the, with that property owner, and I think there is a possibility that it could be available, but we haven't had a recent conversation. So I don't think I could say definitively, but it's, it's certainly plausible that it could be bought.
Okay. And I'd also like to hear Forrest's input about the expansion and what the needs are from his point of view.
Any other questions for this gentleman before he leaves? Okay, we, we may need to bring you back, but we'll hear from Mr. Jones now.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So I don't probably have a ton of new information other than what, or factual information other than what Mark and the team have already shared with you. Clearly, I think for us, we did look at, you know, can we split the sites and can we maintain two sites in town? It's just less than ideal for us, the way we operate. I think we lose a lot of efficiencies, you know, with our ability with maintaining a shop. You know, one of our largest customers is police from a fleet perspective. They're kind of naturally mobile. One of the advantages we begin to share is we are on that site, so a lot of our equipment as well. We're, we also provide a lot of internal service to ourselves from our fleet maintenance. So, you know, now, right now, our staff's able to drop something off when they come back in. It gets repaired and fixed and it gets put back in its current place where it's ideally stored. You know, if we were to separate these facilities, it would be another destination to go to. So I think really, we, you know, naturally, obviously, I'd love to have a new site. I won't deny that at all. I'd be lying to you if I told you anything different. But as he said, I think public works often does a good job of making do. Sometimes that's to our advantage and sometimes it's to our detriment. So we'd certainly be excited about any opportunities, but to speak to Councilman Dellinger's needs about some life safety systems, so sprinkler systems and fire extinguishers and exit signs. So while we do not have a sprinkled building, we do have fire extinguishers in place, we do have exit signs. Just recognize, this building was built to the standards at the time of 19, late 70s, early 80s, I think, when we moved in. So you're, different set of regulations. So we're within code and within compliance. You know, our facility is inspected by the, our Fire Marshal's Office and we pass that and any recommendations to be changed or improved, we follow those. So we're good, but I think when you do look at it back away, you know, some of the modern things that come with a new and improved facility, you know, automated locks, security, things of that nature, we, we don't have. You know, we're, we're pretty well an open facility for much of the day. But obviously, we're excited to be here and talking to you about it and love to consider, have the consideration to move forward and still continue to gather data and bring back a, hopefully, a good solution and some real things to consider. Any other questions for me?
Yeah, just, just, this is probably a minor point, but I wanted to, I think, confirm what I know. So I know you have lots of equipment that you use for mowing, particularly in our parks. I don't suppose at our parks you have any facilities there that you can keep some, some equipment in, or is it pretty much all come from the central location?
So all of our parks and facilities that are maintained are maintained out of this We looked at this when we built White Deer Park and at the time elected not to do it. There was some good reasoning and rationale behind it at the time. I would say that that's one of the things, I think, when we go back and start refining our process, if we move through, how do we dwindle this space down? Obviously, parks is something that we've, we're looking at and studying now as well. Some of those needs could perhaps be addressed in some of that future development. I think if you look at some of those, one of the first versions of plans I've seen did have a small storage facility on it for mowers and small things, but still it's not replacing your, wouldn't be offices and things of that nature, just so you're not having a trailer equipment. I think to someone's point about, Mr. Dellinger's point about, what do we look like in 20 years? You know, with the growth we have all over. So that's, I think that's going to give us some challenges about how we deliver our service. You know, right now, we do have the luxury to, what we refer to as road equipment to places, and we do cleanups, spring cleanups, you know, we're able to take a dump truck and a backhoe and, and go down the road and do that and we can kind of leave from our site. But as we tend to grow and get further out to McCullers Walk, Auburn and those places, you know, we're going to have to make some investments in different types of equipment, which often is larger because you're asking one piece of equipment to do two different things, presents those, those opportunities as well.
Sure. Just, do you have something else?
Yeah, just on the, on the fire stuff, and it could be a typo or, but it, just for that building, it says no suppression hydrant only, and other places said fire extinguishers or it has a suppression system, so.
That may, that may have been, that may have been a typo, yeah. We've got fire extinguishers. I assure you of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Forrest. Anybody else's questions or comments for Mr. Jones? Phil?
Just one, Mr. Mayor, since we've got this picture up here, I noticed all the wooded area to, actually behind the shop going all the way back looks like to that lake area. Is that, that lake area, it's other side of it, 50, that property?
If you were to, if you were to go straight off the left-hand corner of that page, you would run an NC 50.
The 50. So I, I'm looking at that land, you know, and with the, just from outside looking in, looks just like an opportunity, if you really wanted to expand, I'm, I'm not sure if that land is for sale or whatever it is, because it's somewhat locked in, because you're on one side and that, the other development's all the way through to 50, as you're looking at it, for the, right behind the shop area, all the way back there, all that wooded area.
So there, that is some of the land they've looked at and talked about may be available. I think towns had conversations in the past. The challenge is not all of that land is developable.
Okay.
So I think there was where Mark, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we looked and said if we were able to, if, should, should we purchase that? We gain roughly, what, five?
Maybe five usable acres.
Five, five usable acres of land.
The property is a bit steep.
And obviously, it has some lakes and ponds on it, so I mean, there's some things, you know, some, it's not all usable land. It may be a good size in, in, from a map perspective, but you wouldn't be able to get all that.
As I'm looking at that whole thing, I'm just carving into it.
Yeah.
It's hard to say how many acres from just looking at the picture, but is that an opportunity all the way up to behind the storage buildings where you've got the two back-to-back on the north side of it there in that area?
You're referencing where?
Right in there, yeah, all the way up.
Yeah, so it starts getting pretty narrow right here, and then you obviously see this body of water. There's a, and it kind of eases in here, so you've got some, I won't call it wetland, but probably some area that's still not developable there.
Signal.
Yeah. I think most of the land, and I'm going back off memory, so this forgives me, kind of is developable is more in this region right here and not tucked all the way out here.
Okay.
But kind of more hugs the tree line, if you will.
Yeah, that other graphic showed what.
And I guess my concern is, and you brought that point, Mr. Mayor, is with the growth and new equipment it's going to be taking, that if, if we can go ahead and look at expanding this single site, we need to go ahead and plan now because it ain't going to get no better, it's just going to get busier. And either we deal with it in the close proximity or we're going to have a problem down the road. So I like to think outside the box. If it can be on one campus, I, I agree with you, you've got better control of everything. And is this campus genuinely workable in some configuration to get us where we want to be? I guess that's my question.
From my perspective, and this is my perspective, it solves a short-term, provides a short-term relief, but I do not believe that it does, is the best long-term plan. Because again, when you, when you develop that five acres, and remember, we've got, I think, 12.87 today on our current site, you add five of that, I mean, we're at 17, 18 acres, we're still not at the minimum 20 if we had an ideal rectangular and flat site. And those current five are, don't fit that definition.
And would it be, and would it be fair to say that if our focus is expanding there where the current facility is, that doesn't deal with needs at the police storage area or that'd be part of it and/or the Pearl Street storage?
The minimum 20 acres took into account the police evidence storage and the town clerk's records.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to focus too much on that number 20 because again, it would, it would have to be ideal. It's basically, it's based on two times the program's square footage and not just built as in constructed buildings, but it includes all the surface lots, yard storage, two times that is generally about what it takes at a minimum if you have an ideal site. We've seen, we've seen public agencies purchase less than ideal sites and it, you know, they're full of wetlands and cross easements and such, and it can take three or four times that amount of property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I shoot something back at you? I guess the question keeps coming back to me as I'm hearing all the presentation here. You know, we can develop this and try to make it work, are we better off? And it can be tough, but is potentially another location better and, and do it like we need to do it, rather than try to make this work, spend a lot of money here and it's not really going to serve our purpose 15 to 20 years down the road when maybe we need to do it right the first time and go find that piece of property? And I'm sure we, you guys can come up with some ideas. And let's do it right the first time and get what we need versus tying up money, trying to fix something that's just going to last us for a short time. I think we need to get out of that mentality and start thinking long-term here because we are growing, we know it's coming, we've approved so much, commercial as well as residential, that I'm, I'm more concerned that we, I'm sure with you, that we need maybe to look at something else versus fix this and let's do it right on maybe another location. Just a thought.
Oh, yeah, I don't.
Can you show us the previous slide you had that showed the trees and everything, the previous picture, there we go, right there? Now, if you really want to think outside the box, I agree, you should probably look at a new site. And then that's town property that's towned and that's relatively flat, and what could that become? With registered neighborhoods tucked all around it, what could it be? It's only 13 acres, so we're not talking about Meadow Brook or Jürgen, a small park. Thank you.
Hey.
That's how you think it out. You look at here and you look at the trees, you got the nature, the falls off, goes to pond, you got a flat area that you could do something with, it backs up to an existing field.
I knew that'd stir up your memory. I liked it.
If you can do, if we can look at it, you need to look at a 30 to 35-acre site somewhere, hopefully.
Yeah.
But then.
That's a great idea.
You've got something surrounded by neighborhoods that you can reuse for a town purpose for a neighborhood, and it's not a huge park, but it could be a nice park, especially if you could acquire other properties.
Great idea.
Put it all the pieces together and look at what you're going to do with that. I wouldn't sell that off. I would.
Keep it?
Keep it. Property's too vague to sell off.
You could sell a few acres of it for a five-story building with apartments. Really nice, a park around it. I have another question. I guess it's for town manager and money people. There's sort of an aggressive obsolescence to the facilities. How, is this need to be part of our bond discussion or?
I think it's going to be cost prohibitive to be part of the next bond.
But if, the window on some of this, these facilities becoming obsolete and then the growth projections, and we're going to have growing 30, 40% in the next seven years, that's in that bond window, it doesn't need, or partially need to be included as?
You know, I think Matt's done more analysis, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's a big part of the reason that we're showing to you now, and then we're getting ready to have a conversation about the next bond. In an ideal world, it would be, but this is going to be a significant undertaking, no matter which option you choose. We're really not far enough along to have a cost estimate. I don't want you to get stuck on a number that we can't feel is a, a good number, but I mean, this is not going to be in the same category as, as a town hall. I mean, this is a much bigger facility, far more acreage. It's going to be a lot of money. And so I'm all for doing it right the first time, and if we can make that work, we should, but we're going to, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be considering it as part of the next bond. I think we should be balancing all that, but if we want to have achieved the, the optimal, it's going to, it's going to pinch us on what else we can, we can do. And we're going to have to do more work before we can really get you a valid number, but I mean, but it's going to be a, a pretty big number.
But we could look at the, at the bond referendum proposal next year and include in it money for acquisition of property. That's going to be the first step, that's the first step we got to take, and that can be included. the first step we got to take and that can be included because we're not talking, you're talking, I don't know, at what price, at 30 acres or $50,000 or some mean and a half dollars. I'm just doing a quick in my head. It may be more than that, but you, you, that's the first step. You got to acquire the land and that could take time.
And, and may I add to that, going back to the options that are going forward to be studied, is that considered part of the process as looking at the, the location where to place the facilities?
Yes, that is correct. And that's what I was going to say. I think, you know, instead of trying to really latch in on an option tonight, which I'm, I'm excited to hear at least two people think we need a long, uh, one, a large campus, I would say let the process bring that back to you. What is the best option? So I really think as we move, as we leave here tonight, moving through those next three phases of the original scope of our project with IBI and Weatherford and Ravenel will yield you, uh, an easier decision than trying to make one tonight and say, let's just go focus on this. I would say letting us go forward and continue, try to take that square footage down and look at their process, the processes they have will bring us back some good solutions and we'll talk them, maybe present them a little bit more of a business case perhaps as to why this is a better option over another one other than just what Forrest wants.
Well, I don't disagree with that, but I think we know what the, it's going to end up. I mean, it's pretty much, even if you knocked off 50,000 feet off that, it's 170,000 square foot facility, that we're not going to pop that. It's just the best long-term. I think we all realize that. How long would these next three steps take for us? Do we expect to have that six months, nine months?
I think we can do it in less.
I'm sorry, it's just, it's easier for.
Right. I, I don't think it's a six or nine-month process, but a lot will depend on working with Matt and authorizing us to go into those next few steps. Um, and I think this is maybe three, four months.
Okay, that's good. So we can get those, get that back and know where to look and then if we need to look at 30 acres or 35 or whatever, if you can look at 25, you might as, look at 30 or 35, uh, because you're, yes, you talked about 270 parking spaces for employees and, and visitors. I mean, that's, you know, we're going to have the, our own mall, so I'm joking as I say that sarcastically, but I know, but really you're going to need 30 or 35 acres and so forth. That's what you bring back to us to, to look at 2040 or 2045 or whatever when we need to consider that.
And land is not going to get any less prized at West going to West County.
So I think, I mean, I think there's general agreement. We've spent a lot of time talking about this, but, uh, I think basically if we can give the, basically the authorization to proceed and to bring information back, we'll probably spend better time to hear back from them. But go ahead.
Just have one question. Uh, we're talking about our needs by 2040 or, so once we decide on a plan, how long is it going to take to actually start seeing some of this improvement, uh, with public works, giving them more room, being more efficient?
Uh, generally, we see a timeline of anywhere from three to four years from the time there's a property identified or purchased and a design firm such as IBI and Weatherford and Ravenel is authorized to proceed into a design standpoint. So there may be about a, a year of that, uh, for the design, the development of the design, um, obviously all the other steps of bidding and award and mobilization, maybe a, a year and a half for construction. Um, generally, maybe about a three-year process, but it could take a little bit longer. If it's all a brand-new site, I mean, that's probably closer to three years than the time, uh, again, the property and the, the designer are begun. Um, if it's a multi-phased expansion of an existing facility, that takes more time, could get up a little bit longer than that.
So would you say that, that five years is a reasonable estimate, given the variables we might encounter?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Forrest should be in a new facility within five years, no doubt. We all work expediently. We'll make it. We'll make it.
All right. Thank you.
One last point, just to talk outside the box, and you talk about looking for land. You tie the land search for this with added parkland. You had a larger piece of land is part of it for this and part of, for park. A hundred acres, 200 acres. Not you?
Okay. Um, good discussion. Appreciate the comments from all. And, uh, let's see, we need to hear from anybody else. Uh, just the two here, okay. So, um, council, uh, are you, I believe you're approving the action, provide feedback and, uh, approve the, uh, the report to proceed with, with the rest of the study? Everybody in favor of that? Shake your head or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, okay. I think there's consensus agreement on that. So, uh, go forth and bring us back.
Thank you all very much.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Roddy had asked about the, the cost. We, when you all originally approved the project, you, you approved the full scope and the money to go along with the full scope. So while we did direct IBI to stop at this stage, Roddy was just making sure that there wasn't some additional action required in terms of lining up the funds. But, um, I, I think there is a budget amendment coming at the next, um, council meeting that will just help shift it along to the right fiscal year, but the, the, the basic premise of it has been approved, so we don't have to take that extra step.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Thank, thank you, sir, very much. Interesting stuff. And that's probably a good segue into our next item. See, we were talking about bond, CIP and bond update. Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. That was a nice intro into the CIP bond conversation. So thank you so much for that. It's almost like we planned that one out. Um, so tonight we're going to start, it's the, I want to, do you everybody think about it as a start of the process to finalize projects for the upcoming referendum? So we've put together a recommended CIP with a variety of different projects, but it really is just the start. Um, it does not include, for example, the public works facility. It does not include some other items that would potentially be added, but we wanted to have some initial conversations because we are still working through the process. So you'll see the numbers that we have in the current CIP. You'll then get an update, our financial advisors, Davenport are here, in terms of the impact of what we have in the current CIP on the long-term operating costs, the long-term debt affordability, our fund balance. So you guys can get a feel of, here's the projects that we currently have and here's, um, you know, what we could do, we could afford more, we could do less. And then you guys can provide feedback, which we'll then come back with more formalized CIP. In addition, we'll have a regional bond comparison, just some data on how other localities have done in terms of recent bonds, review the history in terms of the current, um, CIP, and then obviously review projects and then questions are welcome throughout. So regional bond referendums, over the summer, we had an intern and we had him review 30 bond referendums from 12 different North Carolina localities over the last 10 years. And the big takeaway here is that they were all approved by voters. So of all the ones that we reviewed, which was everything that he could essentially find, everything was approved. Of the 30 bond referendums, there was an average of 74% yes. And of the 30, 30, 13 were conducted in six Wake County localities that you can see there. So we have a fairly good sample size from North Carolina about the fact that a lot of, um, referendums or the 100% have passed. And the next just shows you a chart that includes the locality on the left-hand side, the dates, the number of yes, number of no, and then the percent. As you can see, again, it's a fairly high percent in terms of voters saying yes. Um, and we were not able to in all cases identify specific implications, you know, tax, tax increases or things along those lines, but, um, several of these did include those types of impacts and voters still were overwhelmingly supportive. So just wanted to put that context in before we move on. Yes, sir.
I have a question for, for council and then about these other bonds. When the bond issue was on the, um, ballot last time, was it broken down by categories or was it one large? How was it, how did it appear on the ballot? Because I noticed some of these others that he's using examples were kind of itemized, itemized out on the ballot.
But, yeah, go ahead. It had the overall amount, but it was broken into?
It was four different questions.
Questions.
Streets and sidewalks, um, facilities, um, revitalization and which one am I missing?
Parks and recreation.
Parks and recreation.
Okay, that was my question.
Thanks.
Right around the 70s for everything.
70s, pretty much. Between 67 and 74, I think.
Yeah.
And we've had success in referendums. We had one in the late 70s, had one in 86, the one in 96, three out of four passed, one didn't. We had one in 2000 and one in 2013. We've had success on all of them except one particular item in 96. That was the community center.
Community center, okay.
That became political football.
Yeah, and I.
I know. But anyway, everything else has passed two to one easy or, or, or more.
Yeah, and as far as we could tell, that's been the case for the last 10 years with everybody in the state. So it's a fairly consistent trend that your voters are generally going to be supportive.
Rick sent me the actual numbers. 73% for street and sidewalk, 70% for parks and rec, 66% for redevelopment bonds and 75% for public safety and services facilities bonds.
Yeah, so also in line with regional trends in terms of the overall average rates. Um, it's fairly consistent. Just a little bit of history, uh, the new capital improvement plan and process was developed in FI 19. So as part of that, we really tried to formalize the process. Um, we created committees, um, based on the different categories of employees that would get together and we discussed the different projects. That helped us prioritize the projects. It also helps us get a better feel of what was going on townwide. So for example, Public Works was going to be aware of a park project so they could help and provide some input. Since then, staff in Davenport have provided multiple updates on projects and capacity. So the presentation I'm going to give to you and the presentation Davenport's going to give to you look, should look fairly similar with updated numbers because they have largely been seen before. It's just now we're getting to the time where we'll actually have to make some act, take some action because the next referendum is scheduled to take place in November of 2021 and recommendation is about six months lead time, so May of 2020. We'd like to have everything finalized so that we can handle administrative tasks and also complete the community education process. So here's the overall CIP summary, which should look fairly similar to, um, what you've seen in the past. This is how I've presented it in the past. So on the left-hand side, you can see all the different categories at the top. So parks is an overall category. It then is broken down into subcategory. So for example, you'll see in a few seconds, parks, you see new park facilities, um, greenways, and it kind of goes down into subcategories. But these are the main categories. You can see parks, transportation, general government, stormwater, capital renewal. And you also have the revenue source. So transfer from general fund, bond proceeds, and that in this case is money from the previous bond, 2013 bond referendum. Future bond proceeds would be the future bond that we would, um, are presuming would pass in November of 2021. Impact fees are primarily fee in lieu of parklands, so money dedicated towards the development of parks. PAL bill is money that's going to be dedicated towards resurfacing efforts. Fund balance is money from our town's piggy bank. Partner agency funding is primarily funding from Campo Lab. So you received a presentation not long ago, uh, from staff there. So that was a big overall takeaway was maximizing Campo Lab availability, their availability, availability of state funding or federal funding, and that's how you can maximize your, get the most bang for your buck in terms of transportation projects. Other is the motor vehicle fee, which we dedicated towards resurfacing efforts. And then unknown funding source, which is one of the things we ultimately are going to talk about tonight, is us, we don't have a funding source at this point. It has not been included in the CIP. And as you see, that is close to 44 million at this point. So that's kind of one of the reasons we're having this conversation because there are a variety of projects that are not being funded at this point. Um, we do have some additional capacity as Davenport will talk about, but we do not have the capacity to do all the projects and adding additional money to the referendum, um, would have an impact on the town's operating bu- budget, our fund balance levels. So it's kind of weighing those different, um, those different factors as we move forward and start to really select the projects and figure out exactly what we're going to do and exactly how much funding we're going to allocate. So the park summary, and one thing I also will point out, when the numbers are in orange, as you can see here, the numbers are still, um, being determined or still being worked through or they're subject to change. Um, so these are staff best estimates, but as you can see, there's total funding of $51 million. Uh, future bond proceeds would be covering 21 million of that. Impact fees would be covering 3 million of that and then unknown funding source at this point of 27.5 million. So in terms of park facility, we have the Meadowbrook slash Jürgen projects. So this, at this point, is still to be determined. Um, I know these numbers have been already, um, changed a little bit and you guys have received, I guess, a more formalized update, I believe, last week. Um, but this is the numbers we've best estimated. We had the time and that was $36 million to be able to do a little bit of both parks or ideally be able to, um, to design both and build them. Um, you have future bond proceeds of 13.5 million, impact fees. So again, fee in lieu of parkland of 3 million and then the unknown funding source of about 19.5 million.
Another quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um, as we're looking at these bond, these capital improvement projects, a lot of them span further than five years. It would be useful to have the first five years in each category and then a five to 10-year lump sum, um, knowing that these sort of park costs are going to extend beyond five years.
Mm-hmm.
That would be useful and seeing sort of the total cost of some of this stuff as we're factoring in, you know, the timing of, of the, you know, money.
Yeah, and that's a great point for the parks and for some of the transportation projects. We've tried to consolidate everything within the five-year window, but it would almost certainly take longer than the five-year window. So we can, uh, go about it that approach or we've had some broad discussions about 10-year CIP, but that's getting further and further out. So I think your approach makes sense.
In regards to bonds, we've had, and we're looking at a lot of figures here, uh, approved bonds that we've been pulling from or spinning on. Do we have any, uh, far as, has ever been, everything been totally spin out or where we're sitting? Or is anything sitting out there that's not been used and what category would it go into?
John can add more context, but I think almost everything has been allocated.
So the very short answer is everything is, is allocated toward a project, even if we've not built it yet, Mr. Matthews. Um, there's a couple of, uh, places where, uh, we know when projects are complete, we may have to come back to council to figure out if we have enough funds in the right buckets, uh, and have to move some funds around within bond funds. Each of those four questions that Mr. Dickerson mentioned, those monies are housed within a bond fund and they, they have to be spent within that. So we can't just take street monies and use it to pay for additional park projects. It's got to be where the voters approved it. Um, we do have, um, about three side, street and sidewalk projects that are either just getting started or still to be started. And if we, if we continue to have any cost overruns with projects, then, you know, we'll have to come back to council and determine can the very last project on the list be done or not. And if, if so, there could be additional monies that we have to add to it. Uh, but there is a, there are, there's identified projects that were shared with the voters that would take up all the, all of the current bond dollars.
Okay. I'm just curious, has, has all that money been spent or how much was still out there other than sidewalks you were talking about?
Um, park dollars, we're pretty certain that, um, that costs that were not foreseen for the rec center in the beginning, um, will, it'll take most of that to, to finish that project. Um, and then there was a tiny bit left for public facility and, um, services, town hall and police. Um, and we're working through some, some things that we need to do for the, both of those campuses. So we think at the end of the day, all those dollars are going to be used.
Okay.
All right, moving on. The next category is park enhancements. So this would be larger enhancements. We did include money for perform, the public facilities repair and maintenance team as part of the last year's budget, which is more of the maintenance of the smaller cost items. So HVAC systems or even playgrounds, but this would be some of the larger scale items that would allow the park department to do some rehabilitation and kind of get caught up. Um, so as you can see there, we have funding of 5.25, um, 2.25 as part of the future bond proceeds and then 3 million as part of unfunded or unknown funding source. And then it's similar again with future greenways. Um, future greenways kind of, and I'll make this point again here in a sec, fall into the transportation bucket where we're going to have to be flexible in terms of maximizing our dollars and it's kind of in the same Campo Lab bucket in terms of you can get grant dollars. So we don't have any defined projects at this point, but we do anticipate some future greenways. Um, we have funding of $10 million, $5 million being covered by future bond proceeds and then 5 million and the unknown funding source. And then the park bond summary, um, adequate, adequate funding, at least at the current level, will likely not be available to fully develop both park sites. Um, both sites could be enhanced or one could become the signature projects, and that was at least based on the current assumptions. And then funding for greenways and rehabilitation is not sufficient to meet growing needs. Um, and as I mentioned, it'll be critical to remain flexible with greenway project selection to maximize funding opportunities. So with that, I was going to move on to transportation unless there are any questions about the parks.
Okay. Way to move.
On the transportation piece, we have the three major categories, street improvements, which is the big projects that you're going to think of a Joan Sausage Road or, um, anything along those lines, sidewalks, um, which sounds just like you would assume sidewalk construction, and then transit. So you can see here, we and then transit. So you can see here, we have fifty-eight point seven million dollars in total funding. Of that, sixteen point four is funded by future bond proceeds, and then twelve point five is funded by partner agency funding. One point I would note here in previous iterations of this, we were assuming a twenty-eighty split in terms of town funding versus Campo Lapp funding. So you may recall that basically the more funding you provide, the higher your project is going to score in terms of the Campo Lapp scoring process. And because the state dollars are depleted right now, we have bumped up our assumption in terms of how much matching funding we would provide. So instead of eighty-twenty, with the town providing eighty, it's now sixty-forty. So our partner agency funding assumptions have declined based on that news. And that's become a, I guess, just generally less certain vehicle for completing some of those projects. All right, in terms of street improvements, many of these projects you saw in Gabby's presentation a couple of weeks ago, so there should not be too many significant changes. We have pavement condition improvements, so that is street resurfacing. We have not included any bond dollars, but I believe there would be the opportunity potentially use some bond dollars to get ahead if we wanted to go that route. But there are a lot of other funding challenges. So, but that's something I at least wanted to note. Have Rand Mill and Main Street improvements, Ackerman Road, Hebron Church Road at White Oak, New Ran Road and Garner Road sidewalks, Betterment's NC DOT projects. So that's projects where the town and NC DOT are working together, or the towns providing NC DOT funding for the projects they're going ahead and doing. You have the Lake Drive Highway Fifty Bridge projects, Ackerman Road Extension, Joan Sausage Road improvements, Wilmington Road Extension, and Grove Motte Road Extension. The other thing I would note within my assumptions, you hopefully also recall at the Campo Lapp presentation, they talked about the fact that for the most part, you are not able to do everything within one year, one budget year, in terms of the design and then construction of a project. So you usually bid or apply for funding as part of the initial process, the design process, but then also as part of the construction process. I have assumed the town would fully fund the initial design process, which I believe helps it score better. And then we would get the sixty-forty match. That's the assumption with the construction dollars. So that's, that's built into the assumptions. So for example, Ackerman Road Extension, this twelve million dollars, I'm assuming the town would fund forty percent. Campo Lapp, the partner agency funding would fund the remaining sixty.
A question, what is the super script?
Pardon?
What's the super script, refer, reference?
The one in the?
Oh, it was basically that funding for Campo Lapp dollars is subject to availability of funding. So just noting that that's, that's not a guarantee. On sidewalks, we have the sidewalk connectors, as John noted, the three projects, the three smaller projects from the previous bonds. And then we have assumed five million dollars in future sidewalks. I know these projects are currently being reprioritized. Planning is going through a process, and I believe we also applied and received or provided matching funding for a grant opportunity. So we would have the ability to get more into the details about exactly what projects we would do. But we wanted to include some funding for sidewalks based on the popularity of them and the need for additional sidewalk access in the future.
When is that discussion going to come up, future sidewalks?
We have not heard back whether or not the, the grant for the analysis has been, has been awarded or not. And we're not sure if they're going to continue funding that, just given DOT's concerns. So I think we, while we have to know a number for the twenty, by May of next year for the bond, we don't have to have selected the specific sidewalks that we will build. So right now, I think we, we're working on refining the list, and we'll bring that back to council probably in the next few months. But again, for the terms of, in terms of deciding how much to invest in sidewalks versus other projects, I think we can focus on an amount that you want to invest in sidewalks, and then we would just start working down the list in priority order. That lets council still be working on prioritization even after we've started the education campaign for the bonds.
How are you determining that list of sidewalks and location?
So the sidewalks are, they start from our transportation plan, and then there's a prioritization exercise that we would go through. So when the transportation plan was done, there was a prioritization of at the time, this is the priorities. Time has passed, and we've finished some of those projects. So staff is going through and marking all the projects that have been complete and taking those out. Some other circumstantial things have happened, like new road connections where a, a recommended sidewalk connection may now take precedent over something else. So once that is cleaned up, we will bring that back with staff's recommendations so that council can weigh on any prioritizations that you want to make. But the, the basis is the transportation plan.
I would like to request that it be a total list of the sidewalks, then your recommendation out of that list. I'd like to see both lists, if that'd be all possible.
Yes, sir.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
I would also point out, and I should have pointed this out earlier, similar to what John just was talking about in terms of not having to lay out all the projects specifically with the sidewalks, we also would not have to do that with the street improvements, which does allow for some additional flexibility. You can lay out how much funding we're going to dedicate towards streets or more toward generally towards transportation. But you don't have to get into specifics, and that does allow you some flexibility as development pressures add or get reduced or different circumstances changes allows some additional flexibility. So just wanted to mention that. And we can talk about that as we get more into the details of the questions and everything that goes with that. And then we do have seven hundred twenty thousand dollars for public transit infrastructure, and that is currently unfunded in FY twenty-three.
Another question about the public transit. What are, what are those costs? What does that represent?
It's the cost to build the bus stops essentially.
Is it, it's not matched dollars with anyone else, or is it partially matched, or?
It's not. We do not currently have a funding source. I mean, technically, they might qualify for Lapp, but the odds are not good at all. The thought would be that, that currently we haven't identified a partner source for building the infrastructure. We are, would be planning on funding from the community funding area program for operating cost. So we could still look for them, but nothing's identified currently for the infrastructure.
Any of the loops or anything that are in Garner we're responsible for, not like Go Raleigh or someone else, or?
Oh, no, Raleigh is built, builds all the infrastructure for the current Raleigh service. This would just be if we wanted to build shelters or stations for that, for the corridor that, that Gabby just showed you at the last meeting. This would just be things that are not currently served by other bus service. So maybe a station midway of seventy where we might connect one day with, the Raleigh bus might connect with our circulator, and we would need a more substantial shelter or even a station. That's a projection for those type things.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and then some high-level takeaways from the transportation bond summary. We do think it provides enough funding to likely cover some of the critical transportation projects, especially if program, agency, partner funding is, can be leveraged. So if we are able to get those sixty-forty matches, we should be in a decent spot to be able to complete at least some of the bigger transportation projects that we have. It also does provide funding to address several of the priority sidewalk projects. As we already talked about, sidewalk projects are being studied in a prioritized list, and the full list will be brought back to council.
Question, would, would transportation be the right place to see sidewalks in here for coming up with some allocation for traffic calming measures? I know it was a discussion well before COVID. It was, a lot of neighborhoods complained about it, and we need money for it. And it's not a problem that's going to get any less over time, especially as there's more traffic. And is that a place we would want to consider listing that out as a capital improvement in terms of street improvements, or where?
I think that would be a likely place. I am not super familiar with how much those different, I guess I would, I'd like to, ideally, there'd be a threshold to what would make into the CIP dollar-wise. So if there was a high enough cost item, then yeah, I think that would be an appropriate place to put it. I'm not super familiar with how some of the, much some of those projects cost.
Public Works analysis of that.
We've got a draft policy that, that the attorney has in, in her rather lengthy list of things to review. And as soon as that's reviewed, it'll come to Public Works. Another way to consider that would be, and we'd need to check for the, make sure the clarifications, but we would often add that work to the resurfacing contract. So there's potentially discussion about whether or not any of the dollars that we currently have allocated towards resurfacing made sense to do some of the traffic calming, depending on where it is. So I would, I would say bond, if it's significant, like Mike said, or otherwise existing resurfacing, resurfacing funding sources, depending on where the, the measure is.
You know, yeah, because sometimes they're not going to marry up, you know, the traffic calming and the resurfacing won't necessarily coincide with each other because they're not going to be resurfaced.
Right.
I just want to kind of get some kind of dollar figure about some of these urgent areas that have requested traffic calming and where it's, their real problems and kind of see what that ballpark dollar amount is. So we can kind of start to look where we're going to come up with the money to do some of that and slow down some of the traffic
Gotcha.
in these neighborhoods.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. All right, so on to general government. So the two categories here are facility development and IT projects. So facility development, the two projects that are shown, the fire station and then the shooting range. The fire station at this point is fully funded with future bond proceeds, with also some partner agency funding. That'd be thirty percent from Wake EMS. It would be provided as part of the overall agreement, and I believe that is still appropriate. And then the shooting range at this point, we have not funded, but that's been something that the police department has discussed in the past. And I believe they've had a hard time accessing the shooting range recently. And obviously, that is an important training component of being in the police department. So that was something that they mentioned as a potential. But so we do have the fire, the fire station being fully funded, but then the shooting range not included. The other thing I would note here, based on the previous conversation we just had, the facility that you would not see here is the new public works facility. So as I mentioned, that is not currently funded. We wanted to tee up that presentation in advance of this discussion to give you guys some idea about where we could potentially be going. Because we did not have specific dollar amounts, we did not include them because we didn't want to, basically, I guess, be pretty much guessing at this point or close to it. So that is something that I think we'll be having in the next couple of months, as we talked about earlier. The next project is a fiber ring from IT. So this would allow various town facilities to connect using fiber ring, fiber, basically underground wire, and it would increase bandwidth, allow things like streaming of park athletic events and things on those lines, and would also just increase connectivity within the town, reduce outages. At this point, we have not funded it, but we wanted to continue to include it because we do think long-term it would be something we could consider. So in terms of the general government bond summary, it's pretty simple. We do have sufficient funding to construct the fire station at this point, based on current estimates. But at this point, alternative funding sources would be required for the shooting range and for the fiber ring. Stormwater, all the projects are summarized right here because there's not multiple categories. So we have added two hundred fifty thousand dollars in general projects, moving on out, so a million dollars total. And that would be funding that would allow us to manage projects that come up that we have not at this point identified or projects that we have at this point become an issue. We have Forest Ridge Road and Junction Boulevard, which came to Public Works Committee a while ago with a formal recommendation to go ahead and fund. So we have those two projects being fully funded, but we anticipate that there will be additional needs in the future. And at this point, we don't have a funding source besides for fund balance or agency savings. So we felt it was appropriate to at least start to get that funding source. But as I mentioned in the recommendations or the summary, it will be important to address and to identify a long-term revenue source for stormwater. That's something that is not going to go away. And whether it's a utility or getting funding in an operating budget, or however we want to go about it, ultimately, it's something that we'll have to tackle eventually because those issues will continue to pop up. And if we're able to be proactive and avoid situations, you know, for catastrophic failures and people's, you know, yard sinking in or things along those lines.
How do, how do other municipalities address stormwater issue funding and revenue sources?
Several in Wake County and, to my knowledge nationally, do have a stormwater utility. So basically a separate utility that charges a separate fee. Those fees can be assessed differently. Where I came from, it was just extra pennies on the tax rate. I think you could do it based on surface area of buildings and different methods. So there's a variety of different ways, but I do know that process takes, I think, like a year to, to get going and to get collecting fees. And I know Mr. Hodges could add to that because I'm sure I've not fully covered it.
Yeah, just that the, the challenge with starting utility, which I think is probably something down the road we want to do, we're going to have to find a year in which we could fully fund all the, all the staffing and everything that it takes because it's going to, it is going to have a delayed return. It's an inevitable step to do, but we'd have to pick the right year in which we thought the revenues were favorable enough to add on additional staffing and other costs that did not have revenue recovery.
And I would point out, both Public Works and Stormwater do include in their five-year personnel projections, staff for Stormwater. So they, they have factored in, we are thinking about it. But at this point, we don't have an identified revenue source to, to cover those positions or those identified projects.
It's going to have to be addressed because we have many, many subdivisions, you know, Cloverdale's built in the sixties, Forest Hills in the sixties, Cloverdale, I mean, Greenbrier in the late sixties, early seventies. And we've had stormwater failures numerous times in Greenbrier already. Not in the fall of the residents, it's just the pipe that was used is now failing. So I'm not big on doing impact fees, but we're going to have to look at this as a long-term funding strategy to address these stormwater projects. Many towns do five, six, seven, eight dollars a month, whatever. And it don't sound like a lot to you. You know, you've got ten thousand residential units and do five or six, seven dollars a month, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a month. I mean, that's, you're going to have to get close to a million dollars, upwards of a million dollars a year to do this because it costs a lot of money. As you see by just the two projects that we discussed earlier that are on here. And I know Public Works has done some projects on their own, some smaller projects they do. But it's still, they have to have funding for materials and so forth.
Yeah, and the equipment, I would not want to speak on this too much, but I know the equipment's incredibly expensive and the lease to buy or leasing versus buying can become an issue. And so, yeah, it's, it's expensive to fix that stuff and it's an important issue. All right, so the last category is capital renewal. And we did, as part of last year's budget, funds that. So you can see at this point, we are anticipating doing in FY twenty-one, Avery Street roof replacement and the resurfacing of potentially some tennis courts. And then we also have some HVACs in the Avery Street Recreation Center. And the idea basically there was if we're going to fix the roof, I guess some of these HVACs are big enough that we'd almost have to take the roof back off if we wanted to put it back in. So it made sense to go ahead and do it at the same time as we were fixing the roof. So that's why we added those, even though they maybe were not as critical. And then any leftover funding would then go to the tennis courts. And then we have future projects, and we are going to, as part of a future process, going to go through and reprioritize these now that we do have the available funding source. And Public Works has become, has had their asset management system up and running now for enough time. We're, maybe not enough time at this point, but soon we should have some sufficient data to really make some data-driven decisions in terms of where we get the most bang for our buck based on that system with the, with the system we have in place, and then just reprioritizing based on cost and where we're at now. So the capital renewal bond summary, adequate funding has been included in the multi-year operating budget. To address many of these items, just wanted to note that. So for example, the fire station, we do have the million dollars. And for the future park, we do have, I believe, one point one million dollars factored into the future operating budget. So we are thinking about those costs, and we'll continue to refine them as we make final decisions. And then many of the transportation projects have a smaller cost that we think we could add in or absorb over time. And then based on input from today and any other input, after you give, as Davenport gives their presentation, we will come up with a revised recommended CIP, which we'll present to you at a formal meeting in maybe the January timeframe, whenever there's an available work session where we'll come back and do some refining and provide you a more formal recommendation. So with that, I'll take any other questions.
Okay, thank you, Mike. A good presentation. I know several of you asked questions along the way. So are there, are there other specifics for Mr. Franks at this time, over here?
Prefer.
Okay, down here. Okay. Like to assimilate. Okay. Anything else from you, Mr. Franks?
No, just to introduce, Mr. Ted Cole and Mitch, I forget your last name, but really I'm, are here from Davenport. I think Ted's going to start us off in terms of their presentation, which will focus on how this CIP is currently structured, what impact our long-term debt capacity, our operating, our fund balance levels, and kind of the overall feel of how, how various changes may have an impact to that as well. So with that, I will turn it over to them. I'm just going to pull up their presentation.
I do have one quick ques, like question and a point for staff on the planning that I don't see. I don't see in the CIP a lot of projects related to 540, uh, in and around 540 for Wydow 50 Auburn is, I don't know, the, this is, the plans have been drafted a long time ago and they kind of sit and expand, but I see a kind of a dearth of, I don't know if there aren't needs out there or if we just haven't reevaluated based on the growth, but especially considering we're doing this as part of a bond discussion and it's longer term, and these are high-growth areas. And so I'm not sure if there are other projects that have sort of maybe thought we were, that were good, but we reprioritized something else. Now we need to look again and bring them back. But as, you know, uh, you know, just 540 is, is going to make a significant impact. And I don't know that, seems like there would be other types of road or street improvements in those areas that would be necessary to help the flow of traffic. And I know some of those are DOT roads, but some may be other types of infrastructure needs or, so, um, if you'll go back and start crafting again, maybe look at the growth pattern again and see if some other things need to be reprioritized higher or, or.
Gotcha. We do have, um, I think 540 bike betterments, and that's a smaller project, but that is one thing that we do have in there. Um, and I would defer to Mr. Hodges on a more.
We do know that, um, once the, um, the water and sewer, uh, casings or lines that are going to be added to the 540 project, once those are priced and Raleigh evaluates how much of those can be covered through their CIP, there could be a dollar figure that comes back to Garner to pay for anything that is in addition. We just, we aren't, haven't gotten those numbers yet. So there's a, there's a future line item that could come to you for 540 utilities. Um, roadway projects, most of the ones that are in our transportation plan are, um, are significant widens or connections that are not going to otherwise get done. Many of the roadways around 540, another way to look at it is the demand pressure this there, the development, development's going to take care of many of, some of those for us so we can focus on the things that, the connections that are not likely to get made. But we'll go back and, we'll go back and look at the network with that.
If there are these sort of on-deck projects that make the cut, I'd be curious just to look at those again. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome, sir. Good to see you again. Haven't seen you in a little while.
Well, it's nice to be seen, and it's very nice to be at an actual meeting. We don't get to do many of these these days. Um, so it's, it's, it's great to be here. Again, I'm Ted Cole, Mitch Pagulio. We're with Davenport. We serve as financial advisor to the town and have for a number of years. Um, what's on the screen is exactly what was just handed out. So it's, it's whatever you prefer to look at. There are page numbers in the lower right-hand corner of each page. Should I wait a moment for counsel? Remember, here we go.
Yeah. We will take a break in a little bit, but, uh, yeah, so.
Great. Um, so there is, um, whether it's the hard copy or what's on the screen, you'll see it, is exactly the same. And I'm going to take the first few slides and then, uh, turn it over to Mitch. I'm looking at page one, which is the second page of the book, but page one in the lower right corner. Um, real high level. Uh, again, we're not looking for any action from you all this evening. Any feedback you'd care to offer would be appreciated. Any questions we can answer along the way, feel free to stop us. But we're going to start at a fairly high level. Just remind you all about the town's credit ratings, how those have progressed, briefly talk about your existing debt, the debts that's in place today, a slide on fund balance and the trends of fund balance over the last several years. And then we're really going to get in to the meat of the discussion, which is discussing a comprehensive planning model. We had presented to you all back in March at, I believe it was a retreat, and we were talking about planning and planning models. And so we've been working closely with staff over the last several months to bring what we're going to present to you tonight, which is essentially taking three independent models that are very effective in their own right, right? So you have a CIP, a capital improvement plan model. We have a debt capacity and debt affordability model. And then independently, there's a general fund, um, budget and operating model. And what we've been working on is to pull all of these things together to give you a, a more comprehensive view of the, the longer-term financial performance or projections for the town that takes into account both capital and operating. And we've got some very high-level observations. So, starting on page two with bond ratings, um, the three national rating agencies are listed on the right-hand side, Moody's, Standard and Poor's, and Fitch. You all have ratings from Moody's and Standard and Poor's. Uh, AAA is the highest rating any local government can achieve. You are AAA from Standard and Poor's. In that bottom right corner, you can see that you achieved that in July of 2018, and it's been a progression over time to get there. So you're at the highest level with them. Uh, from Moody's, you're a double A1. You're one notch away from the AAA, and you've progressed to that point. You achieved that rating in the spring of 17. Um, we have no reason to believe, um, that it, a AAA from Moody's is, is, um, not achievable, um, maybe not a, a near-term necessarily, but a medium-term goal, and we're going to talk a little bit about that. And, and what we're going through here in discussing capital planning, um, budget forecasting, all of that resonates with the rating agencies, uh, generally in a category that they call management, um, you know, policies, procedures. They, they look at these sorts of efforts very favorably. Um, so we are of the opinion that AAA from both Moody's and S&amp;P is, is a very real and achievable goal. Um, a little bit of perspective on the left-hand side of the page, from Moody's, we subscribe to data that they publish across the country, cities and towns. You'll see there are 182 different double A1s. So those would be your peers from a Moody's rating, and there's 175 triple As. And then maybe a little more of interest is the move, is the North Carolina cities and towns. We've excluded counties because it's a very different financial dynamic, but, um, AAA cities and towns across North Carolina, there are 12. Um, many are in the, uh, Wake County area. Uh, double A1, nine across the state, one of which, um, is Garner. Okay? So you enjoy very good ratings, and we believe there's an opportunity to improve as we move forward. In terms of existing debt, um, you can see it two different ways here on the page. On the left, we're showing it graphically. Everything we're going to be talking about tonight is on a fiscal year basis, so ending June 30. Um, as of the end of fiscal year 20, you had total debt outstanding of a little over $42 million, 36 and a half million of which is voted GO debt. Um, and then you've got some installments or limited obligation bonds, as we call them, some rolling stock loans that round out another five and a half million. You can see either graphically or on the table on the right, um, what your fiscal year debt services. We know that to the penny. All of your debt is fixed rate. It will only change if you choose to change it, and that would usually be a refunding for savings, which we've done periodically. So you can see in the year we're in FY21, you're paying just under $4 million. We have a model, uh, the debt model that you've seen before, or many of you have seen before, that shows exactly where the, all the money is coming from to make those annual payments. And that is going to get incorporated into this more comprehensive model. Um, real quick, on the far right-hand side of this page, there's a column that's headed 10-year payout. Um, this is an easier page to introduce this, this debt ratio. It is a forward-looking ratio that is measuring in the next 10 years from now going forward, how much of that 42 million of debt, just the principal, how much of that will be paid back. Higher is generally better. It means you're amortizing your principal more quickly. So what you can see is in the current year, for the existing debt on the books today, in the next 10 years, about 60% of this debt will have been repaid, given the debt schedules that we have. That's going to be relevant here on page four when we talk about your existing debt ratios and policies. Um, these policies have been in place for a number of years, um, certainly going back to ahead of the 2013 referendum when this was becoming, um, a topic of, of greater discussion and, and relevance and importance, given that referendum you all were undertaking. So these are, um, adopted by you all as town council or town board, um, and they are reviewed at least annually when you're going through your CIP and budget, and they will play a prominent role in our, our model as well. So in the upper left, the 10-year payout ratio, the red line is your policy. Uh, we, we do not want those green bars to fall below the red line in this case. So we want a 10-year payout ratio at any point in time that's at least 50%. Um, and you can see, as I explained on the prior page, you're currently at 60%. And if you don't do any new debt and allow debt to pay off, you'll see your 10-year payout ratio get stronger and stronger each year. Takeaway is you're in compliance. On the upper right, debt to assess value, we're measuring that debt outstanding, which is about 42 million as a percent of your tax base. The policy states we don't want that to go above 2%, and currently you're under, just under 1%. So again, you're in compliance with some cushion. You have, within a very, you know, very specific discussion, within this ratio and this policy, you have capacity to take on more debt. Um, doesn't mean it's affordable, but you do have capacity there in that debt ratio. And then finally, in the lower left, your debt service to expenditures. So here, we're measuring your annual payment at essentially as a percent of your budget. Our policy states we don't want that to go above 15%. We're, uh, we're below it. So we're in compliance. Less is better here, 10% and declining. So like the prior one, y'all do have some capacity to take on additional debt that we'll be talking about and still show compliance with this policy. Um, it's really, I think, largely more about a discussion of affordability. How do we repay any new debt that we might consider taking on in the future? So sort of setting the stage, you are in compliance with all of your debt ratio, or excuse me, your debt policies. General fund balance, um, on page five, the table on the left is pulled from the audits. It's fiscal years 15 through 19. Um, the first two lines are just setting up what the general fund revenues and expenditures are in those given years. So you can see, um, what the budget is, either looking at revenues or expenditures. The, the lines five through 12, you should be able to tie back to each audit or CAFR, and you can see how your fund balance is shown, um, by its different categories, its different accounting categories. And in total, on line 12, you can see how the dollars have evolved year over year. Um, we started at about 23.7 million. 2018, we hit sort of the high-dollar mark in, uh, high watermark in dollars at 30.5, finished 19 at about 28.4. And you can see within any one of those categories how the dollars evolved. Unassigned being the dollars that you have the least amount of restrictions on, therefore the most control as an elected body. Um, and then sort of as we go up the line to non-spendable, you have more and more restrictions and less and less flexibility. But again, you can see how things have evolved in dollars. And then at the bottom of that table, lines 14 through 18, we're measuring fund balance as a percent of either revenues or expenditures for any given year. We're looking at both total fund balance and unassigned fund balance. We've restated your policy, which is not tied to a dollar amount. It's tied to a percentage of budget. It is generally in line with that unassigned component of fund balance, uh, line 11. So what we're measuring here is how does line 11 in dollars, um, at, what is it, as a percent of your, either your revenues or expenditures, either way that you'd like to look at it. Your policy states that you would like that to be at least 30% with a, uh, policy floor of 25%. And you can see on the right-hand side with the charts, whether we're looking at the light green line, which is total fund balance, or the dark green line, which is the unassigned component. Either way, over this five-year period, you have been in compliance with your policy and then some, right? You're above the policy. Uh, we have seen a little bit of a decline over the last few years on a percentage basis, right? Not necessarily every year have you declined on a dollar basis, but in some cases you have. Um, but as a percentage basis, we've seen a little bit of a step down, but you are still in compliance. Um, some of that was planned. Um, when we start talking about a capital reserve fund that was a set aside a number of years ago of about $6.9 million. Some of you all remember that number specifically. We're going to show you a little more about that in a moment, but that was money that was set aside a number of years ago, uh, leading into the 2013 referendum and all the debt that was issued as a, as a result of that referendum and some reserves that were specifically set aside to supplement your debt, annual debt budget. And that is contributing to a little bit of that step down. So what I'm, I want to connect the dots there, that that is not necessarily a, uh, an imbalance in your operations that is reducing that fund balance. In some cases, it's, it's planned for and was part of our capital planning effort. Mitch is going to talk a little more about that on the forward-looking discussion. And then I'm going to just wrap up with page six, which sets up his discussion. Little bit of a repeat here, but going back to that retreat in March, we've got these three current models, the CIP, the debt model, and your general fund budgeting model. And we have been working to sort of consolidate those into a more comprehensive model, um, that will give you a more complete picture. Uh, it, it is, can be a bit complicated and overwhelming, and, and hopefully we'll talk through it today at a high level and start to give you the ability to digest it. What I will tell you is we're not losing the integrity of any of the individual models, right? So we can continue to track those individually to the extent that's helpful, but an effort to bring them together to show a more comprehensive financial projection that's, that's inclusive of both capital, the revenue savings plan, the, the, the debt that we might be issuing going forward, as well as, um, operations, both step, existing operations as well as proposed new operating initiatives. Okay? With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mitch. He'll pick up on page seven.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
See if I can. Get this out to get us on one page here, maybe. A little bit closer. Can take my mask off. Um, okay, so, um, just picking up a little bit of, of where Ted left off, we, we do have this comprehensive model at this point. And, and it is, again, the individual components, and they're all brought together. So a change in, a change in the assumptions in the CIP will flow through to the, the debt affordability model, will ultimately flow through to the overall general fund budget model and vice versa. So we can really track how one component will impact another component in real time, um, cool, on a coordinated basis at this point. So the first component, um, is the CIP, and we've got summary here of that CIP, uh, slightly different format than Mike presented it in, same numbers, but we have broken it down. It's, it's the full 121.5 million that Mike talked about, but we have broken it down into two different categories, funded CIP and unfunded CIP. So, so as you saw, Mike walked through each of the individual categories. There were certain categories that had a source of funding called unfunded, meaning those projects weren't being funded as part of this CIP process. So we've broken this out to allow us to look at the actual projects that are being funded in the CIP, what we're calling the funded projects, which totals $77.8 million. And that leaves total unfunded projects that have been identified, but not, um, do not have an identified revenue source of 43.65 million. So as part of this comprehensive model, we will be measuring the impact of the funded projects. The $77.8 million are flowing through our model, but we will continue to track the unfunded portion so we know what other projects are potentially out there. As part of those funded projects, um, a couple of things to highlight, um, Mike, Mike noted the partner agency funded, funding. Largely, that's, that's Wake County participating in the fire station and Campo for certain transportation projects. Um, the transportation projects, if you choose to include those in the referendum, can be sort of a, a lump sum of transportation projects, and that can be flexible. If Campo funding doesn't come through for one project, you could consider sliding. you could consider sliding the bond dollars over to a project that could qualify for Campo dollars. So I think that's a little bit flexible, and the timing within the CIP could evolve as Campo dollars become more known and identified with certain projects. The other thing in the dark green box is the debt proceeds, right? So these are the potential bond projects that are included in the current draft of the CIP, $43.665 million. That $43.665 million is going to flow through to our next component, the debt capacity and debt affordability model. Some of these other components, like PFRM, are funded from the ongoing operating budget. There's been dollars identified in the operating budget for the PFRM funding, and that's going to flow through the operating budget model side of the comprehensive model. So first, picking up on these debt proceeds leads us into our debt capacity and debt affordability model. So starting out, Ted talked about our existing debt. That's what you see in the charts in the dark green. We are then adding to that existing debt, the $43.665 million of new debt projects that have been identified as part of the CIP. You can see that funding starts in fiscal year '22, and it's spread out fiscal year '22 through '25. So the entire $43.665 million is being funded by fiscal year '25. As part of the GO bond referendum, the initial referendum is good for seven years. So you would have a seven-year timeframe initially to spend any dollars that you get authorization for from the voters. And that can be extended in one-year increments out to a full 10-year authorization. So the first initial authorization is good for seven years. It can be extended out to 10 years. But in this case, the CIP calls for all of these dollars, at least initially being spent by fiscal year 2025. And you can see, we're assuming a 20-year term for all of the new GO bond debt issued. That's consistent with what the term that the town has issued in the past. And we've assumed a level principal amortization, which is, meaning if you're going to borrow $20 million every year, you're going to pay back a million dollars in principal. That is the local government commission who approves all debt issuance in North Carolina. That's their preferred debt structure. So that's what we've stuck with for planning purposes. And that is ultimately going to result in a declining debt profile for you, meaning under a level principal approach, the first year of principal and interest is going to be your highest debt payment, and it's going to decline every year thereafter.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, please.
Why was 5% used as the assumption? That seems astronomically high for municipal bond.
Yeah, good. So right now, starting out, 5% is our baseline planning assumption. If you were to issue in today's market, you would likely get an effective rate of around 2%. And for general obligation bonds in North Carolina, you will have the opportunity to choose to either issue a fixed par amount of bonds, so in this case, $43.665 million. In the municipal bond market, and in the market we're in right now, sometimes bidders will want to pay a premium for your bond issue. And in doing so, they would pay you more than 100 cents on the dollar for your bond. But in exchange for that, they ask for a slightly higher interest rate. So while we may be borrowing an effective rate right now of around 2%, the average coupon rate, which is what's calculated that interest that you pay, may be more like 3.5% to 4%. So because we're issuing GO bonds, we tend to err on the higher side, perhaps allowing for some premium pricing and typically plan at either 4.5% or 5%. For conservatism, we used 5% in this case.
Thank you.
Also known as the CYA in the model. Because we, because on the bonds that we issued at last, we did get the premium, we got rates 3.5%, 3.6%, whatever.
Yep.
But everything was based off 5%.
That's right. And I think what we'll see in a moment is we've outperformed that, which gives us a little bit of opportunity to be talking about the referendum now. So the goal is to be conservative on the front end, to allow for potential increases in interest rates, but also could allow opportunities to issue additional debt either after this referendum or during the referendum. You know, we've taken advantage of some installment financings with these same dollars over the years. So gives you a little bit of flexibility and, as Mr. Singleton said, a little CYA in the model for contingency. Okay? So this is, this is what the debt picture would look like by bringing on this new $43.665 million over the next five years. Ted referenced this earlier, debt capacity, right? So when we measure your debt capacity, we're going to look at your ratios compared to your policies. Like Ted said, you have capacity underneath your policies, and that's borne out when we lay on this new debt on top of your existing debt. The $43.665 million is still below all of your existing policies. You have the capacity to take on this level of debt within your existing policies, and you still have a little more room. The related but different concept is going to be, is it affordable? Do you have the cash flows available to pay for the debt service within your current budget? And as part of that, we're going to move to the debt affordability side of the debt model. And a refresher from some, perhaps new information to others. Back in 2013, as part of that referendum, there was a debt affordability plan adopted. And at that point in time, certain revenues were dedicated for the repayment of debt service, particularly related to the GO referendum that was undertaken. So really, five main sources of revenue. The FY '13 general fund budget that was appropriated for debt service in that year, $759,000 was flatlined, meaning you put that amount in your budget and you've continued to budget that $759,000 every year. That is an identified revenue source for the repayment of debt. As part of that referendum, we looked at several different tax impacts and tax increase approaches. Ultimately, a 2.75 cent tax rate was adopted, was advertised as part of the referendum. The referendum was approved, and that 2.75 pennies was put in place to support the referendum. That current equivalent is 2.28 cents. After the latest revaluation and going to revenue neutral, that 2.75 cents becomes 2.28 pennies. That 2.28 pennies is dedicated for the repayment of debt service. The town borrowed debt to purchase water and sewer capacity. As part of that, the town set aside water and sewer capacity fees that were collected to repay the debt service. Those fees are no longer collected, but there's a balance in that water and sewer capacity fee, of water and sewer capacity fees that has been committed fund balance, and that is being used over time to repay the debt service. And so that is, that will essentially cover almost all of the planned debt service without any investment earnings. It's about $82,000 short. So the plan is to continue using that fund balance to repay the debt service, and whether it be by investment earnings or some other $82,000 from the general fund, that will be sufficient to repay the water and sewer capacity fee debt service. Ted mentioned the capital reserve balance. So in 2013, the town set aside 6.9 million of unassigned fund balance to go towards the bond referendum and the debt funding plan. That 6.9 million was planned to be spent down over time as your debt service spiked from the issuance of the new debt. Remember, I said the first year of debt issuance is the highest payment? So as that new debt came online and you had a spike in your debt service, that 6.9 million was used to supplement the annual revenues. That has been spent down over time, like Ted said, drawing down some of the unassigned fund balance. Currently, there's $1,006,000 left as of fiscal year end 2020, and we're projecting that's going to be fully utilized by fiscal year 2022. And then finally, the revenue savings plan was implemented as part of the 2013 referendum process. And a little more detail on that revenue savings plan. That was, that was something that was developed through the planning for the 2013 referendum, was ultimately adopted and implemented in fiscal year 2015. And that, the goal of the revenue savings plan is to set aside a percentage of growth in annual revenues to support capital funding, capital funding for infrastructure projects. So there was identified a series of revenues that were applicable or eligible for the revenue savings plan. I won't read them all out, but you see them listed on the page. Of note, ad valorem taxes is included, but there were certain taxes that were excluded from the revenue savings plan. For example, the 2.75 cents that was dedicated to debt service, the growth in that 2.75 cents, now 2.28, does not go into the revenue savings plan. That goes to the dedicated debt service funding. Similarly, I believe there was some fire tax, or some, a tax raised for fire, to support fire, that is also excluded from the revenue savings. And the original plan is, has been evolved and, I think, simplified over time. And where we, where it stands today is, is that the first 1% of growth, it does not, is not eligible for the revenue savings. Every, every percentage of growth over 1%, 30% of that is dedicated to the revenue savings. So that is the annual dollars that are being set aside for the revenue savings plan. That is calculated as part of the budget. And once, once you've set a budget and you determine the annual growth from budget to budget in these revenues, those dollars are fixed, and they are set aside every year going forward for the revenue savings plan. To the extent the budget declines in the following year, there's no, there's no dollars added to the revenue savings plan, but there's no dollars taken away from it either. So that is how, that is, at a high level, how the revenue savings plan is working. And for a little bit of perspective, you can see the history and projections associated with the revenue savings plan on page 12, graphically up top and tabular format down below. And essentially, I'll highlight here where we are in fiscal year 2020. In fiscal year 2020, the annual revenue savings plan dollars, so column F, there's $1.44 million of annual funds being applied to the revenue savings plan. Those are annual dollars being set aside for capital as part of the revenue savings plan. Interestingly, you can see in fiscal year '21, in the height of COVID, planning for the budget, plan for reduction in collection rates on the ad valorem side, reductions in sales tax. There was a net reduction in the annual dollars eligible for the revenue savings plan. So there were no dollars added to the revenue savings plan as part of the fiscal year '21 budget. It was held static. Column F, 2021, it was the same as it was in fiscal year 2020, $1.44 million. Looking ahead, foreshadowing to some of our other modeling, planning for a bounce back in sales tax revenues and other revenues, we see a fairly large growth, or projecting a very, fairly large growth in fiscal year '22 of just under 15%, which much higher than the 1% growth. 30% of everything over 1% gets applied to the revenue savings plan. And so in 2022, the revenue savings plan jumps up to 2.56 million. It's a $1.1 million growth in one, in one year, almost doubling the dollars available in the revenue savings. Okay? Feel free to jump in and ask questions along the way.
Looks good so far.
All right. So, so the dollars we talked about on the prior page, plus the revenue savings plan, these are the dollars that we're looking at in terms of debt affordability, the dollars that are available for debt service that will help us understand the affordability of our potential CIP and ultimately, the bond referendum. And that's the analysis we get into here on page 13. And I know this is a little small, so I'll see if I can blow it up for us here a little bit.
A little small. I thought I was going to use some monochus.
I blew it up. So this is the affordability plan. Obviously, it will look familiar to some. And it's set up on a fiscal year basis. Columns B through H are looking at our debt service expenditures. So we have existing debt servicing column B. Separately, we've broken out the existing vehicle debt service. This includes the fiscal year 2020 borrowing that you, that you all did for vehicles. Fiscal year '21, the current fiscal year, fiscal year '21 borrowing for vehicles. Column D is the existing water capacity debt that I referenced earlier. And then column E is the debt service associated with the $43.665 million of bonds in the CIP. The, all of that debt service has been layered into this model at this time in the appropriate years. So column H totals all of that debt service up. And then columns I through P get into the revenues that we have available for debt service. So you'll see, we have the same revenue sources that I talked about on the prior pages. The 2013 budget appropriation, the 2.28 cents that is currently dedicated to debt service. Column J, column K, the water capacity fees. Column L is, we're using a portion of the revenue savings plan. I'll come back to that in a moment. Column M is, is an allowance for new revenues from CIP projects if we choose to pull that into this model. And then column N is future general fund revenues. And we, we've got that, we've got that footnoted for you, is that assumes some of the growth rates factored into the town's operating budget model. So all that totals up in column P, total revenues available for debt service. And we compare column P, the revenues available, to column H, your debt service expenditures, and column Q, the annual surplus deficit. And what you see is in each of these years, column, in each of these years, after fiscal year 2022, we're exactly break even, right? The revenues equal expenses. Well, that's because in the first two years, we're spending down the remainder of the $6.9 million. And then after that, we're starting to tap into the annual revenue savings plan dollars. But we are only using the exact amount of the revenue savings plan we need to pay for the projected debt service. Everything else that is not needed in the revenue savings plan is falling into the revenue savings plan fund balance over in column Y. And what we see is that revenue savings plan, we're going to be using the annual dollars. In some years, we will supplement the annual dollars with, with some additional revenue savings plan fund balance. Ultimately, that revenue savings plan bottoms out or gets to its lowest point in fiscal year 2028, it's $6.7 million. So the 43.6 mil, six, excuse me, 43.665 million of debt, you have the affordability within these dedicated resources to pay for that projected new debt service. And there is additional revenue savings plan dollars left, $6.7 million in fund balance in fiscal year '28. So you could choose to use that additional $6.7 million now. We know, and we'll see in a moment, there's, there's operating expenses that come with some of these projects. You build a new fire station, you got to operate it. You build a new park, you got to staff it, got to operate it. So you could consider using some of those revenue savings plan dollars to help offset the operating cost associated with the capital. Or you could use it to address some of those unfunded CIP projects. Remember, there's $43.65 million of unfunded CIP projects. I know it's a bit confusing because the numbers are so close, but 43.65 million of unfunded CIP projects, you could use that $6.7 million to go towards those. On a page, you On a pay-as-you-go basis, you could fund 6.7 million of the 43.6. Or you could consider issuing additional debt as part of a, a bond referendum to fund some of those. And we calculated for perspective, we calculated the additional capacity in fiscal year 2023. If you were to issue all of the debt you could with the excess revenue savings plan in fiscal year 2023, it would be about 11.3 million dollars of additional capacity. So about 25% of those unfunded projects.
Or we could elect to hold on to it and be prepared for the future, because until two and a half years ago, we didn't know Amazon was coming and we didn't know we were going to be doing Tuna Sausage Road. Also, we didn't know we were going to be, when we bought Meadowbrook then, we didn't know we were buying Jurgen Park, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Much easier to matter to hold on to it and what could happen in the next couple, couple of years, two or three years. Because, you know, when you look at this and, and the model shows it so good, if you didn't have the, the revenue savings program in place, like you look on here, look, can you blow that up for me?
Which column?
Well, right there, see the 1.190 million dollars revenue savings plan funds, that's all, a penny is 450,000, right, Michael? There's two and, two and a half cent right there. The next year, you're almost four, you're at four cent. So that's how much you'd have to raise taxes to supplement that money in there, every year. So that's where you find out and realize how it has, has a positive impact, because the 2.75 cent dedicated to the 2013 bonds, y'all brought in models that ran from five cents, six cents, there was a model that was 12 or 14 cents, I believe.
That's right, yeah.
And so we had to supplement that in some way, so that's, that's what it helps to supplement. So the, the long-term impacts matter beneficial, especially for the capital projects. And then you touched on about how maybe I'll set operations, because the fire station, I believe is a million, 1.1 million dollars a year, I believe, so that's just one example. Thank you.
So, so that's kind of where we are on, in terms of the, the afford, the debt capacity, debt affordability side of the model, right? So within the identified policies, we have capacity to take on the 43.6 million of, of funded debt projects. And within the affordability model, you have the affordability to take on that 43.6 million. And there's some additional capa, additional affordability left over, and you have options for what you could do with that. Okay? And to kind of transition into the remainder of the comprehensive model, which is focused on the general fund budget model, the forward-looking general fund budget model. And as part of that, and, and this plays into some of our prior work as well, is the tax base assumptions. So, so at this point, we are working off of an, an actual fiscal year 21 assessed value, 4.66 billion dollars. And then fiscal years 22 through 26, staff has developed projections for what that assessed value could look like. I think Mike is part of the development pipeline, things that are known about, and, and past trends. Fiscal years 22 through 26 is based upon a, a projection of what those assessed values look like. And you can see the growth ranges from 3% up to 8% in that tax base. So column C is the assumed assessed value base that is flowing through the comprehensive model. We also have the, the tax rate side, the tax rate projections, columns D through G. So we have our base, what we call our base tax rate. It starts out at the current tax rate, 49.71 cents. As part of the, the budget model that was presented, I think as part of the fiscal year 21 budget, there was an identified tax rate increase of three and a half cents out in fiscal year 24. So we've been consistent with that, that budget projection that was part of the budget and plugged that three and a half pennies into fiscal year 2024, I think largely tied to some of these new projects and new initiatives coming online, like the fire station, parks and, and new staff. So we've got the three and a half cents in there, and then an assumed collection rate of 99 cents when calculating the total tax levy available. In the future, we've assumed that the tax levy or the tax base is going to grow at 3% per year after 2026. And there's, there's a number of other budget assumptions that, that flow through this model. At this point, the operating or general fund budget side of this model incorporates every line item that goes into your budget. And we worked very closely with staff to develop that. So if there is a specific line item in your budget, not just departmental level, but line item level, that you want to see a different growth rate on, we can apply it. But in general, we've kind of grouped it into categories for, for making future growth assumptions. Everything is growing off of the fiscal year 2021 budget. I think that's important. We're starting at the fiscal year 2021 budget levels and growing off of that. The baseline assumption, unless, unless we say otherwise, we're assuming that expenditures are growing at one and a half percent per year. That is, that is what we'll call our baseline assumption. If we don't have a specific assumption for a specific line item, we're assuming one and a half percent growth. You can see a number of items we have identified or broken out separately for different growth rate assumptions. I'll highlight a couple for you. Group insurance is assumed to grow at 5% a year. So I think we've all kind of seen insurance rates over the last several years, allowing for that continued increase through fiscal year 2025. After 2025, we revert back to the baseline assumption of, of one and a half percent. Salaries are assumed to grow at 3% every year in the model. So that's tied to COLA adjustments and other salary initiatives or benefits initiatives. And that's assumed, I think, at 3% a year, which I think is, is on average what you all have been realizing between COLA and other merit initiatives. So that's 3% per year, every year. And then also, as Mr. Singleton mentioned earlier, we've got the new operating expenses, fire station at 1.1 million dollars coming online in fiscal year 2024. And because the bulk of, of those expenditures are associated with salary, we're assuming that's 3% growth every year thereafter. Same thing with parks, a million dollars coming online in fiscal year 2025. A lot of that is salary driven, so we've assumed 3% annual growth. And then new positions, not in the current budget, but new additional positions on top of what you have right now, is 370,000 in fiscal year 21, and then every year adding an additional incremental 510,000, which I think is roughly six positions. So that is being added every single year to the operating expenses. On the revenue side, we have the same baseline assumption of, unless we say otherwise, it's going to be one and a half percent annual growth. We've already talked about the assessed value side. So we know the, the assessed value levy is growing at a higher level than one and a half percent, and it's going to flatline at 3% after fiscal year 26. Sales tax, I alluded, is assumed to take a bounce back in fiscal year 2022, so it was reduced as part of the fiscal year 21 budget and assumed to bounce back in fiscal year 22. It's a 43% growth rate of a rebound there. And then after fiscal year 22, we grow at 5% every year for five years, and then after five years, it's reduced to 3% growth, same as the assessed value growth for 26 and beyond. Couple other fees that are kind of associated with usage, recreation fees and park, parks and rec facility fees are assumed to have a similar bounce back to sales tax, accounting for, for reopening and, and folks using those as well. Couple other things to, to highlight, we do have investment earnings built into the analysis. It's based upon your, your projected fund balance, and we have assumed a half a percent earnings rate for fiscal year 22 and beyond. Right now, half a percent is a lot higher than we're earning, but we're, we're using an average over a longer period of time. Hopefully, over the horizon, we can average higher than half a percent. And then we do have some new revenues tied to some of the CIP projects. We have new park operating revenues coming in, 400,000 in fiscal year 25. So you have the million dollars in expenses to operate the park, but we're assuming there'll be revenues coming in to offset a portion of those. And then you all do not typically budget for park development fees as part of the original budget, but as they come in, you realize them. As that is a funding source for the CIP, we have assumed $400,000 of annual park development fees coming through the comprehensive model. Okay? So, so all of this comes together, the CIP, the debt affordability, debt capacity, debt affordability model, and these, these other general fund budget assumption items largely operating driven, come together on page 16. And again, I know this is a little small, I'll blow it up for us here to talk through, but I'll kind of walk you through the categories of how this is working. This is at the total general fund budget level. Lines three through seven, line seven is total revenues. So this is your ad valorem, your sales tax, and all of your other annual revenues that come in. It is summed up on line seven. 36.4 million is part of fiscal year 21. We've got what, what I'd call your existing expenditures. So this is your existing departmental expenditures, current service levels, plus the growth that we've assumed. Special appropriations, debt service, that's an existing line item. It is going to increase over time as we, as we add additional debt, but we've got existing revenue sources to pay for that, we know. And your vehicle and equipment replacement capital outlay, again, it's a million dollars in 21, drops back down to 819 in fiscal year 22, and then grows from there. So total, subtotal of what I'm calling existing expenditures on line 14. Then we add in our new operating expenses, line 16 through 20. And so you can see between the new positions coming online and the new parks and the new fire station coming online, when all, when the park and the fire station are both online in fiscal year 25, plus the new positions, that's four and a half million of new operating expenditures over a five-year period that we've added to the budget, on top of any growth in our current service level expenditures. So total up, line 22 totals those, a line 14 existing expenditures and line 20 new expenditures for our total expenditure level. And then line 24, we're just comparing the revenues over or under expenses. You can see we, our, our revenues are under expenses as projected in fiscal year 21, makes sense, we know you appropriated dollars, fund balance as part of the fiscal year 21 budget. And then after that, fiscal years 22 through 25, revenues are over expenditures at this point. 2026, we see expenditures exceeding revenues through our projection period, which is fiscal year 2030. We then on line 26 have our CIP capital expenditures. That is, you know, if we, if you look back, that exactly matches the CIP, 77.8 million dollars in total, CIP capital expenditures. And then we have our other financing sources and uses, largely tied to the other uses and other funding sources on the CIP. So things like existing bond proceeds, spending those in fiscal year 21 and 22. We've got our new bond proceeds coming through the model on line, on line 33, and then that partner agency funding on line 34. So those are our other financing sources and uses largely tied to the CIP, which leads us to our net change in fund balance, and net change in total fund balance, which is just those annual revenues over annual expenditures, plus the capital funding, or minus the capital funding, plus the other funding sources, gets us to our net change in total fund balance. And then, as Mr. Singleton did eloquently earlier, we've just, just equated those, if there's a shortfall or a use of fund balance, equated that for perspective to the equivalent value of one penny. So what you see is, we are plant, we are showing some draws in fund balance over the next five years, pretty, pretty much break even in fiscal year 22, 23, 24. And then when all of those new expenditures come online in fiscal year 25, along with all of the new debt, we're, we're seeing some, some draws in fund balance every year from fiscal year 25 through fiscal year 2030. And just, and then we show how those draws impact your total general fund balance, which is starting out at 27.2 million, and by the end of fiscal year 30, under these assumptions, would be down to 19.8 million dollars. As I alluded to earlier, we're continuing to track that unfunded CIP. So we're, we're showing a decline in fund balance, and we've got another 43.6 million of projects that have been identified without a funding source at this point. All right? And then a little more detail on the fund balance for you on line 17. So geographically and, and in, in the table below, we're, we're going back to those general fund balance audited accounting categories. And working with staff have come up with what we think is a, a reasonable projection of how these accounting categories could shake out over time based upon these projections. You know, we, you see lines two through four, they're restricted or non-spendable dollars. We're assuming that those don't change from fiscal year 2020 levels. We then get into the committed dollars, and these are funds that we're able to track. We have these, all of your committed funds modeled as part of the comprehensive model and are tracking the inflows and outflows of those committed dollars. So we have good projections of your committed fund balance. And in particular, you can see things like the water and sewer capacity fee fund, that is declining over time, and it's gone by fiscal year 27. Remember, that's tied to your existing debt, and we're paying it down. We're using that to pay off the water and sewer capacity fee debt. Line eight is the revenue savings plan. So you can see how that, that committed fund balance ebbs and flows, right? We're adding to it in the earlier years, and then once, once we get to the point where we've issued enough of our new debt, we start using a little bit of that fund balance every year until we bottom out, like I said earlier, 6.74 million in 2028. So we're tracking that revenue savings plan portion of the committed fund balance. Same, same approach for all of our other committed fund balances. We do track, we do track assigned fund balance. Typically, your assigned fund balance has been set aside for future budget appropriations. So to the extent our, the model is projecting a use of fund balance in future years, those dollars become assigned in the prior year. And so that's how we're projecting those, those assigned balances. And then your unassigned fund balance is everything that's left over. Your total fund balance minus all of the other categories leaves you with that bottom bucket unassigned, which is the most flexible dollars that you have to utilize over time. That is tied to your current fund balance policy, 25 to 30% policy for that unassigned fund balance. So we've tracked that on line 16, looking at unassigned fund balance as a percent of expenditures. Again, we've projected those expenditures on the prior page. So we're, we're using that expenditure level to track your unassigned fund balance percentage. And you can see, as the unassigned fund balance is going down over time, that percentage is going down over time. Ultimately, we're showing you would fall below, or projecting you would fall below that 25% level in fiscal year 2024. We also thought it was interesting to track the revenue savings plan fund balance as a percentage of budget, as a percent of budget. And you can see that does decline over time as well, but it starts creeping back up towards the end. Those dollars are, we know, they are taxed dollars, they are general fund revenue dollars that have just been set aside by you all for capital expenditures going forward. So, you know, if you were to, to look at your unassigned fund balance and the revenue savings plan, which are really dollars that would have otherwise fallen to unassigned fund balance had you all as, as a council not chosen to commit them, we're curious what that would look like. And you can see on line 18, where we add in the unassigned. And you can see on line 18, where we add in the unassigned and the revenue savings plan, that's a higher percentage. And, and just for perspective, that would buy you a few more years on your unassigned fund balance policy as it currently stands. You wouldn't fall below the twenty-five percent level until out in fiscal year 2028. And then finally, lines 21 through 24, again, for perspective, we've taken your, what is your unassigned fund balance policy floor? That twenty-five percent of unassigned fund balance requirement, compared it and, and equated that to dollars. We've then compared that to your, your projected unassigned fund balance and calculated what the difference is to get back to your policy level. And then shown what that difference is, what that equates to in, in the value, in the projected value of a penny in any given year. So for example, in fiscal year 2024, we're seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars below our policy level. That equates to about one point two seven pennies. So, and remember, we already have, in fiscal year '24, we already have the three and a half pennies that were assumed as part of the operating budget model. So, so to get back to your fund balance policy level in 2024, that would be another one point two seven pennies. And so I think what this allows us to do is, is hopefully give you all a little bit of perspective on how things could evolve under this set of projections. I, I think it's important to note that it's based upon your '21 budget, right? We're growing off of your fiscal year '21 budget. And typically, you outperform your budget. It's, it's by nature, you try to be conservative in your budget process, and you outperform that budget. So hopefully, just by, by, by the nature of growing off of fiscal year '21, there is some conservatism built into these numbers. And it's something that we would recommend, you know, continuing to track, at least on an annual basis, like we've done with the individual models, the CIP, the operating budget model, the debt affordability, debt capacity model. Continue to track all of these on an annual basis as things evolve. If we would have done this a year ago, we wouldn't have had the impact of COVID built in to fiscal year 2020 and 2021. So things change over time, things evolve. But this is a snapshot of the projection at this point in time.
So, you've given us a lot to ponder and to assimilate here, a lot of facts and figures. I, I'm supposing it goes without saying that, uh, moving forward and looking at all this information, you would anticipate that the town would retain its good credit rating throughout the current and the, and the immediate future and the long-term financial picture?
Yeah, I mean, I think at, at this point, that's, that's the goal, right? You all manage yourselves well historically, that's very clear. You're, you're high double A, triple A entity at this point, rated by the rating agencies. You know, you've had solid fund balance, well in compliance with your policies. You've maintained a very manageable debt profile within your policies despite the level of growth that you all have seen. And you've really implemented, like Ted mentioned earlier, these management practices and management policies that the rating agencies really like to see. And I think this is part of that, right? It's, this is the, the, the inevitable result, or early stages of those planning processes, you're now able to look forward to fiscal year '24 and say, hey, we may have, uh, we may have a point where we're not in compliance with our unassigned fund balance policy. So we need to be thinking about that as part of our decision-making process and build that into our decisions that we're making today, knowing that that's something we may have to address in the future if these results hold. So I think that's part of it. And I think that inevitably, Mr. Mayor, that, that's where that will inform, these processes will inform your decisions so that you don't end up by fiscal year 2030, well below your unassigned fund balance policy. So I would expect that as things evolve over time, this picture will evolve, and you will stay in compliance with those policies. And certainly, if you do that, I would anticipate maintaining your strong credit ratings.
Just one other quick question. I will say to council, as soon as we finish here, we'll, we'll take a quick recess break for everybody. And I can't help but just note, sort of on a personal note, that the revenue savings plan has its own name, but I always think of it as the council member Kennedy. I started to say slush fund, but that wasn't probably the way to say it, for sure. But obviously, he gets a lot of credit, I think, for introducing that and, and certainly touting it and pushing it over the years he was on the council. So with that, let's see, council, question, comments at this point? Let's start, Mr. Vance?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, you're good. Mr. Dellinger?
Yes, questions. What is the risk of, you know, you have got a forty-two million dollar amount sort of presented in this model here? What is the interest rate risk of waiting to issue more debt later? Considering we're at sort of historic lows in this sort of window? What is the risk of waiting to issue more debt in terms of debt service?
Certainly. And that's, that's one of the reasons why, going back to your question earlier, why we, why we use that five percent planning rate? We try to build in that interest rate risk on the front end with the goal of hopefully coming in at lower interest rates over time. So the goal with the, with that planning rate is to make it an achievable interest rate level that can be attained. And then if we do better, that will create additional capacity along the way.
And I guess the other, the other question is why the sort of forty-three million amount is what is being presented when, you know, in, seven years ago, in 2013, the town's budget was twenty-six million dollars and issued thirty-seven million dollars worth of debt. So it was actually more than the budget. The town grew eighteen percent in that seven years, five, six thousand people. And we're, here we are with a forty billion dollar budget, looking to grow twelve thousand people, or twenty-seven percent. Why would we only be entertaining forty-three million dollars in debt when historically, if you base, you know, we're enduring a higher growth period?
I can answer real quick for you. Yeah, because the previous bond referendum was in twenty, was in 2000. That was in 2013. All those bonds funds have been, we had, our debt service was dramatically lower. We're just, and we didn't issue bonds till 2014 and 2015, so we're just in the sixth year of those bonds. And those, those bonds had, the debt service was dramatically lower than it is now. And that's why. You, you borrowed, you did twenty-five million versus thirty-seven million. Your debt service was a whole lot lower. You get, the existing debt service was much lower. Where now?
Previous?
Yes, yes. Where now, for the 2013, the debt service is still there. And even though we have the RSP and also the tax increase to fund it, our debt service, our, from a percentage standpoint, is much higher. Because I, I don't argue with you, it'd be nice to have more. And there is more debt capacity technically, if we wanted to use every single penny of it, but that is a risk. I don't think we want to run.
That was my missing?
Yeah.
Piece of that. The other is sort of going back to the projections over five years versus an extended period. I kind of alluded to it, Mr. Franks, and you've got it truncated into, into five years while some of these, is that just when it's going to be issued, and so that it plays out over time, or?
So you're referring to the, the CIP?
Yeah.
The capital improvement plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's typically a, a, a select time horizon. At this point, it's a five-year CIP. We have shown the comprehensive model going out to fiscal year 2030 to help, to show all of the debt service coming online. But, as you know, it's hard to project out into the future. A lot of things change. We wouldn't have seen COVID coming last year. So we try to make reasonable projections over a reasonable period of time, but every year you go out further, it becomes harder and harder to project. So a, a five-year CIP is pretty standard in, in the industry in looking at a, a five-year time horizon for projected capital.
Okay, moving right around, I believe, Mr. Barringer, anything? Mr. Singleton?
I don't think Mr. Kennedy would appreciate the mayor referring to it as Mr. Kennedy's slush fund since it's taxes, and it helps offset increasing taxes. That's what it did, that's what was done.
I was strictly tongue-in-cheek, I assure you.
Yeah, I hope so, because he probably had a stroke if he was watching this on Facebook right now.
I'll see him in the morning and apologize.
Yeah, he might want to. Anyway, that, what that did was have the help, growth to help pay for our future debt, so.
Indeed, yes.
Anyway, I thank you for the information. It's always, uh, look forward when y'all come, because it's, uh, it's a lot of good information. And even if the print is small on the charts, it's, uh, when we can read them, it's still, it, it really is really good information, because you're helping us to, to guide us into what, the extent we can do on a bond referendum, but also looking at the CIP, the bond referendum, hand in hand. And operational expenses too. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews? Okay, so we're through for this round, is that right? Okay, did I skip you, Mr. Vance, or did I?
No, sir, I had no questions.
Good job. All right, uh, anything else here?
So from us, I guess, if you do see Mr. Kennedy in the morning, please tell him we said hello.
Yeah. I'll make sure he gets it. I'm serious, he'll read every line.
Okay, uh, thank you all. As we're finished here, I'm going to suggest we take about a seven-minute recess and give everybody a chance to reset, and we'll, uh, we still have some stuff to go. So come on back and let's get moving on the rest of our agenda. So we're recess for now.
C, ground-mounted panels are restricted to the interior side and rear yards only and shall not be located within any perimeter buffer by section 7.1 K6, buffer with charts. D, ground-mounted solar panels visible from the street right away shall be screened from view with an evergreen screen for low-branching shrubs. The plantings may be located remotely from the solar panels to screen the view from the street. If approved, this text amendment would apply town-wide to all CBD and residential-y zone properties. If the council is interested in moving forward, the staff recommends setting a public hearing for November seventeenth to get public input. Again, Mr. Coons is here to speak on behalf of his application, if so warranted by the council. At this time, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. And yeah, we will see if council has questions for you and/or maybe we can hear from Mr. Coons as well. I think solar panels is something that is getting more and more attention. Just on a personal note, I know my daughter's house that she and her husband initially bought out in the great state of Colorado. Many of those houses out there have the solar panels on the, on the roof and, uh, becoming more popular in a lot of places. But at any rate, um, so let me see, I'll begin here. Anybody have any quick questions for Mr. Bowie? And then we'll see if you want to speak to Mr. Coons as well. Start over here.
Not right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And what's being proposed would not exceed twenty-five percent of the main building footprint.
Correct.
Which is similar to what's done in business, right? Or if, if there's anywhere else, the same way, right, as president? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, going this way?
Just curiosity question. What is the reason for wanting to change the current zoning requirements or UDO? We see a lot of, of solar panels mounted on the roof, so what is the reason for this?
Well, we do, we've gotten a lot over the last few years. The applicant came in and requested, he, he submitted a building permit application for that, for a ground-mounted system, and we were not able to process the application because they're not permitted.
Right, I just wondered what the applicant's reason for wanting ground-mounted, I'm just curious.
Yeah, he may have to, applicant may have to answer that more technical.
Yeah, you can either go there, Mr. Coons.
So the, the real purpose is to optimize the amount of solar energy you can get. So on a roof, you're limited to the slope of the roof. So three and twelve is about twenty degrees. That's what I'm trying to get on, on a ground-mounted system. You design the system to optimize both the orientation, north, south. So you want to face true south. Most houses predominantly don't. You know, you, mine is fairly close, it's about thirteen degrees off. But the difference between orienting it exactly south and thirteen degrees is probably fifteen percent of efficiency you lose. So it's primarily to optimize the panels you can put on there. Also, in my case, my house, my roof, the trees on the other side of the street cast too much shadow, it wouldn't work. So if you have the open land, you have more flexibility in designing and optimizing a system on the ground than you do on a roof. The other thing is, when you put them on the roof, when you have to replace the shingles on the roof, that cost gets added to the return on the investment. A lot of people don't pick that up. But to take the panels off and then reinstall them is several thousand dollars. So you add that to the cost of actually putting them on there. There's also a safety issue. It's much easier to work on the ground on these panels, cleaning them, maintaining them, than getting up on the roof and having other people do that. So it really, which is why you see the big solar farms are always on the ground, and they're always pretty low. In our climate, we're a cooling climate. So primarily, you want them in, oriented properly for the summertime. So you make them flatter, which is about twenty degrees is the maximum. You can tilt them at different angles later on, you know, in the winter and in northern climates. I also have solar water heater panels on my house existing. And they're oriented at forty-five degrees because I want them in the winter. I want more hot water in the winter, because I use it for heating in my house. So if I put my panels at forty-five degrees on, for the summer, it wouldn't be as effective. So it's primarily kind of an engineering optimization thing.
Thank you.
Okay, on around? To Dellinger?
Yeah, it's the question about, is it, a little question of having the, available in the central business district. Seems like an inefficient use of real estate space for density downtown. Outside, further, it makes sense to me. I just, I, I have a hard time with that as being a downtown feel that solar panels out in somebody's yard, when there shouldn't be that many yards out there anyway. The other one is, you know, there municipalities, when drafting this particular amendment, did you look at, where other municipalities looked at and how they implemented sort of residential solar? And this is, and is this in alignment with sort of their general approach?
I did reach out to other municipalities to see what they, how they handled this type situation. And it was kind of a mixed bag. Some do with conditions, some simply don't. So there was nothing really consistent about it.
And that twenty-five percent, was that part of the policies they had implemented? Or was that based on our?
They did not give me that level of detail. It was just matter of fact of do they allow them and, or not? And kind of some of the rules, but not to that level of detail.
That's all. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Vance?
If this is adopted, are we setting a precedent for others to want to do this as well?
Yes, but then again, it would depend on how we structure the ordinance, to how it would read, if there were any restrictions based on size of the property or whatever. So we would look at all those types of things before, because you would be opening up to everyone to be able to have it.
So we're not being asked to, to, to actually approve this tonight, but to set this potentially for, if we want to move ahead with it, for a public hearing? As I understand it, is that correct?
How are the, Mr. Mayor, how are the homeowners associations? What kind of feedback are we getting? Because, you know, a covenants, out of where I live, there's a pretty strong covenants on certain things. And what kind of feedback are we getting from other municipalities or in our area on homeowners? Generally, a covenants is, is stronger than whatever our policy is. Am I correct on that? A covenants in a homeowners group?
We don't enforce covenants, but I mean.
They typically, they, they can be.
Right.
That depends on the homeowners association.
If it's a strong homeowners group, their covenants is stronger than what we do. In this regard, I would say.
Right, they can definitely be more restrictive. But it, it does depend on the homeowners association and how vigorously they enforce their covenant, covenants. Because there is some expense to the homeowners to enforce these types of covenants.
It doesn't even, doesn't have an active HOA, I mean, it's been around forty-plus years, so. You know, yeah, I mean, it's like anything else.
you know, I mean, it's like anything else, homeowners association can regulate and some may allow them, some may not. His point is, if you can go solar, the roof system is not the most efficient way to do it. Solar is supposed to help you be efficient, but it may not be the most efficient way to use the sunlight. That's what I think he's trying to get to.
And also, back to neighborhoods and developments, I have almost an acre of land, and it's pretty clear, most, if you look at an aerial view of Garner, most houses don't have that, too many trees. I purposely bought this land in 2006 for that reason, so I think far fewer homes would put them on the ground. It's much more efficient, but you're really looking at outside of city areas that people would predominantly use it, or in larger, older, you know, pieces of land.
I thoroughly understand what you're doing, I have no problems with solar panels, this is kind of new things come before us here like this, and just trying to make sure we've got all the questions on the table, possible concerns, so.
The 25% limit of the area would also reduce the size and the return, for example, the size of my house, the number of panels you can put on it, the amount of energy it's going to generate, that's a, that's a good rule of thumb in limiting what people would do. So between the land that's available and the size of it, you're not going to get a solar farm, you're not going to get, you know, a really big array out in somebody's yard and we're limiting to eight feet. So it's, it's doable, I don't, I think you'd have far fewer people putting them on the ground than on the roof.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question? I think I know the answer to this, but this ordinance would allow them on the roof and on the ground, or either/or, what you're asking for? Sounds like you have them on both.
It's, it's either/or. Your existing one, I'm not taking away the roof option, it's just adding the ground-mounted system.
So you could have both?
As an option, right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
I'll have to say, I have some of the same concerns Councilmember Delinger has about the central business district being included in this. Is there a way that we can leave that out, or do we have to include the central business district?
Well, we want, certainly we want to hear every concern that you have, because we would have to draft the ordinance, so we want to take that into consideration and put in it together. So whatever, any concerns or questions that you have, we want to hear it so we can address it.
Yeah, well, I would not like to see it in the central business district, I think it's, it's fine to do that when you have the space and the land to do it with, but putting in the central business district seems like it would defeat part of the mission of what we're trying to do there.
But you do allow roof-mounted in the central business district?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, back around this way, anybody else over here? England, you, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Banks. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Coons. This will, let's see, I believe the council, are you going to agree that we'll have staff to draft and, draft an ordinance language and just get it sent to the planning commission?
We have, we'll set the date for a public hearing first, correct, then it'll go to the planning commission. And they suggest we look at setting a public hearing for November 17th, 2020.
Right.
And I think per Ms. Behringer, Mr. Delinger's concerns is they'd like central business district removed from that and then come back with what I think you've put forward so far.
Do we still do, still do it by the 17th?
We need to, we don't need a motion for that, do we?
Probably not. Oh, Mr. Attorney. Is that the public hearing?
That's what it says, they recommended action, set public hearing for November 17th. I'm just sitting here reading off the agenda.
If there's general consensus to go forward with that, that's fine.
Yes, taking, taking central business district out of the, of the poll, yes.
I mean, we can formally vote on it if we need to, but yeah, that's what I sense is a.
We're just setting a public hearing, we're not voting, we're not approving it.
Okay, is council satisfied with it, set a public hearing, 17th of November, our second meeting in November, I believe? Yeah, okay. Anything else we're missing, Ms. Attorney? No. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, our next applicant for a text amendment was Falk and Foster by James L. Lapin, and there is, I believe there's a representative here to speak on behalf, Mr. Ben Herrick.
Okay.
Again, the applicant is Falk and Foster. There is no particular site in this case, they're just asking in general, so that's why I left that, that blank, no zoning district or anything like that, they have not selected a site at this point. The current requirements of the UDO, Article 5 Use Regulations B8C7, states that setback radius whose circle center is, is the tower base shall be required as follows, for all cell towers that are permissible in districts except where strictest standards are required in the R40 zoning district. A, from all sides of a tower, there should be a minimum setback of 500 feet measured straight line to any portion of a property line of a residentially developed lot. B, where any side of a tower site adjoins undeveloped property zone residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to at least 100% of the tower height. The town council may allow this setback requirement to be reduced to a minimum of 60% of the tower height based on competent evidence provided by applicant, clearly showing that the structural integrity of the tower is designed to collapse within the reduced setback distance, and that the effective owners of record adjacent to the reduced setback distance provide written documentation that do not, they do not object to such setback reduction. C, where any side of a tower site adjoins property zone non-residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to at least 60% of the The proposed text changed by the applicant, Article 5 Use Regulations B8C7, A, from all sides of a tower, there should be a minimum setback of 200 feet measured in, in straight line to any portion of a property line of a residentially zoned, residentially developed lot. B, where any side of a tower site adjoins undeveloped property zone residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to at least 100% of the tower height or the break point minimum distance as described below. C, where any side of a tower site adjoins property zone non-residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to at least 60% of the tower height if the tower is not designed with break point design technology, or if the tower is designed with such technology, then the setback must be break point minimum distance as described below. And that's, that is addressed in E, break point minimum distance, break point design technology, which is defined as the engineering design of a tower wherein a specified point on the tower is designed such that in the event of a structural failure, the failure will occur at the break point rather than at the base, anchor post, or any other point on the tower. And F, if the tower has been constructed using break point design technology, the minimum setback distance shall be equal to 110% of the distance from the top of the structure to the break point level of the structure, or the minimum side and rear yard requirements, whichever is greater. And finally, certification by a registered professional engineer licensed by the state of North Carolina of the break point design and the design's fall radius must be provided together with other information required herein from an applicant. And in example, for example, on a 100-foot tall monopole with a break point at 80 feet, the minimum setback distance would be 22 feet, which is 110%, 110% of 20 feet, the distance from the top of the monopole to the break point, or the minimum side or rear yard setback requirements for that zoning district, whichever is greater. And if approved, our recommendation is if approved, the text amendment would apply to all telecommunication towers permissible in the R40, CR, SB, and I-2 zoning district. If the council is interested in moving forward, staff recommends setting a public hearing for November 17th, 2020, to get public input. After which, staff would then draft ordinance language, and this will be sent to the planning commission for recommendation, then back to council for decision.
Okay, I'm going to defer to council, but, but, but I'd be inclined to ask the general question, how in Leavens' language, this, this proposal changes current ordinance requirements? Maybe, maybe it's being explained here, but I'm not sure I fully understand it.
So on slide four, in A, on slide four, the minimum setback of 500 feet, there's a, currently, the current standard is a setback of 500 feet, measured in a straight line to any portion of a property of a residentially developed lot. That is one change, they want to go from 500 to 200.
Yeah, okay.
And in B, on page four, says where any side of the tower site adjoins undeveloped property zone residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to at least 100% of the tower height. The town council may allow this setback requirement to be reduced to a minimum of 60% of the tower height based on competent evidence. And so the proposed text changes, A, from all sides of a tower, there should be a minimum setback of 200 feet, measured in straight line to any proportion of a property line of a residentially developed lot. And in B, any side of a tower site adjoins undeveloped property zone residential, the required setback distance from the tower to any property line shall be equal to 100% of the tower height or the break point minimum, the break point minimum distance. So in other words, he's asking to add the break point minimum distance, which means that the tower is, is a 100-foot tower, at 80 feet, it's designed to break, then you have that calculation, which we don't currently have that calculation in there then, in that ordinance as it is, in the ordinance as it is. So he wants to implement that into the ordinance.
Changes setbacks and the height of the tower, it sounds like.
Not the height of the tower, just a setback in case it falls.
Okay. I thought I saw something related to the height. Okay, I'll go to council.
How long has this break point technology been? I remember when the infamous WRL tower fell, and about years ago, and obviously it didn't have a break point in it. How, how long has this technology been out, far as towers?
20 years.
20 years?
Yeah.
Wow.
All of the monopoles are, have the buckle point built into it, that's the break point, and they don't fall over flat anymore, they, they've got a stress point and then they fall in on themselves. And even the lattice towers that are freestanding, that look like, you know, you put the toothpicks together and build it up, those also have a buckle point in it. The guide towers, they are the ones that fall over, you know, the big ones with the guy wires, but we don't build those anymore, really. So the monopoles are the most common these days, and those have, the, the technology for building those has gone up tremendously, and it's been 20 years since they've been able to put the break points in them.
Okay, going around. Shinkton.
So, as stated on here, proposed on, if you gave an example of a 100-foot monopole, the break point at 80 feet, the minimum setback would be 22 feet, 22 feet from the residential lines, that's what you're saying, instead of?
No, that's, I think that's for the undeveloped.
Undeveloped.
Parcels, right. For a residentially used parcel, we'd still have a 200-foot buffer, no matter what, and for if there's no development next to the site, then we would, we would want to go with the break point technology. So the break points are going to be at like 50 feet, so if you have a 200-foot tower, you figure, rule of thumb is half the tower height for the fall zone for the break point, so that's going to be 110 feet is going to be your typical setback. Because the, most towers are right around 190 feet to keep them below the 200-foot FAA lighting requirements, and then most of them generally are, have a 50% fall zone built in. So the break point's normally going to be at 100, 100 feet on a 200-foot tower, so with your 10% buffer, that'd be 110 feet. That would be your, your standard, your, your typical setback, and that would apply to where there's no development in the adjacent parcel.
Let me follow up on that, Mr. Mayor, with this question, with no development, because we have in parcels that are, there's a lot of them are under R40 rule, and they're coming in being high density, and if one of these was allowed to be where it's undeveloped residential and then high density builds that is rezoned, then we're, we're not 200 feet back.
Well, right, so people can build and live where they're comfortable, and if they're not comfortable that close to a tower, they, they, they don't have, you know, they can choose to use the property how they, how they, but, but you'll see that people are generally comfortable living near, near towers. And we spent the beginning hour and a half of this meeting talking about how this town is growing, and with the growth, you need more infrastructure, and the reason why we're here is because when we're looking at where can we put a new tower, because there's more demand for the data, there really aren't enough parcels that meet the ordinance where we could site a tower. And Verizon is the client that we're working for, and they're very interested, they have very aggressive network objectives to have their phones work, they want their phones to work the best, so they're looking at this town to make an infrastructure improvement, and this is the way that they want to do that. So it would allow, there really aren't very many parcels that we've found that could support and meet the ordinance.
Existing ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
I just have some reservations about reducing it from 500 feet to 200 feet, that seems like a big jump from what we've been requiring before. I would like to see some more supporting information, because I've lived beside something that's promised me that there would be no problems, and there were many problems. Maybe I just don't have enough information, don't know enough about the subject, but reducing the setback by more than 50% seems excessive.
Right, and part of, part of that is the way you define the property line, it's not, it's not 500 feet from the residence, from the, from the home, it's 500 feet from the property line containing a home. So there's a lot of buffer built into this ordinance, which we don't see in a lot, in some surrounding.
So we know why then it was 500 feet to begin with?
Because when we first did tower ordinances years ago, used to break point technology's been around 20 years, and we did tower ordinances before that.
Okay.
I mean, we had, I can recall, when I first got elected, we had a public hearing that took two nights, two meetings, they had so many people lined up to speak against the tower, because they were scared about it.
Right. And now everybody in this room has a phone in their pocket, I'm sure.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Sal, sir.
Okay, going this way.
Yes, have you, did you check the other municipalities who have similar towers in them?
No, we have not done that yet, we're waiting on feedback from the council to move forward or not. If you decide to move forward, then we would rigorously do our research and come back with some information for you that time.
Okay, have no further questions.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Yeah, based on the ordinance you've proposed, how many new, two questions, how many new tower locations have you identified in Garner? And how many would be replacement towers that you would take down to then build taller? So that, now you've got break points, you can build taller towers, replace this shorter tower.
Right, and I don't think, I don't think we've identified any specifically at this point, we're not, we're not to that point yet, but what we've, what we've found is there aren't enough total. Now, the second part of your question, the replacement towers that would go up taller, I don't think you'll see that, I mean, it's possible that it could, it could work, I don't think you'll see the cost, the cost for that to increase the height of what's existing already. Because the systems are now currently operational for all the major carriers in the town already, and for them to spend the money to put up a taller tower to get 20 or 30 extra feet, even 40 extra feet, isn't going to be worth it for a radio frequency standpoint or a systems performance standpoint. They wouldn't get the. They wouldn't get the, the benefit of, of that.
I guess my, my reservation, sort of like, uh, Councilwoman Behringer, is we, we can't really calculate what the, one, the visual impact of this will be, I, I can't, I can't believe that Verizon hasn't identified two or three dozen sites around town they wanna put towers in.
Well, and they, they may have, I, they just haven't told me.
But I would like, the residents would like to know where those towers would go, and I think, two, some of these provisions on setbacks around undeveloped property, you said a point, well, if the tower's there, then they'll make the decision whether they wanna live next to it.
We could certainly have a report before the public hearing on that.
Uh, I'm just, I, it's hard to gauge what the impact of this would, would be, is it, are we talking twelve new locations, are we talking thirty-six, I mean, all through?
Well, so.
I just don't know.
So there's two parts to that, right? There's, um, your potential sites and your actual sites. So your potentials, your, your actual sites aren't gonna be on every potential site, because a lot of land, landowners aren't gonna wanna tower on their property, and it's gotta be based on the radio frequency engineering data, where they need to fill in gaps, uh, or where there's extra density of population so that there's more usage there, so all of that will factor into it. And this is the, the very beginning of the text amendment process, so.
I think it'd be helpful to get some more information on other municipalities have implemented this, and also maybe some visualizations of what, what our ordinance is now, and what the potential visualization of the new ordinance would be for new towers. Um, I, I can appreciate this brake technology and how it creates the opportunity for shorter setbacks, um, but it'd be helpful to kind of see visually how, and also how many of them are gonna.
We can certainly provide that at, at the public hearing and before this is final.
Well, I would suggest this, instead of having, setting the public hearing, why don't we get the information first, and then we'll decide if we want to move forward with the public hearing. I would ask for the information Mr. Dellinger mentioned, also, uh, what other towns are doing, because we have to, well, we have to accept the fact that with technology nowadays, towers are, I mean, I remember we've been approved for twenty-five years, so they're gonna be there. Um, I reckon one concern I seize, I mean, that the districts, really, you're, you're, this is, it, it says in here, if the amendment happens, it would be permissible on all the R forty C R S B and I two zoning districts. So I reckon that's the only thing I can think about, you know, in service business, which backs up to service business, which backed up to the service business, say down, uh, at, uh, North Greenfield or the other side, or the White Oak Business Park, they're all service business, so their, are their regulations and, and setback zones different than these? Or they're all the same? I don't know.
I, I thought we, uh, we identified some surrounding communities, but I'm not seeing it in my package. I could certainly have that report before.
Looking at some of the stuff here, yeah, if we could, we could get what, I think Mr. Dellinger talked about as visual, but also what some surrounding communities are doing, because I, I don't disagree that you can have to, we're gonna have, if there's, probably have to be amended in some shape, form, or fashion, because of, of the world we live in nowadays. So, uh, I, I think we all would like to see that information first, and then decide if we want to move forward with the public hearing.
I'd agree with that, Mr. Mayor, it makes sense, it makes sense.
Just out of curiosity, if, if we go that route, uh, how, how long do you think it would probably take to bring the information back in? I'm not saying rush it, I'm just, I'm just curious.
I could probably have something to you in two weeks or less.
The November seventeenth meeting, which we were talking about setting the public hearing, you could have it by then?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, then I suggest if, if that's available to be on the agenda, then have that as a whole new business or whatever, maybe, if that's okay with, uh, Reginald, is that okay?
Yes, we were already planning, if you went ahead with it, to be at that, that November seventeenth meeting.
Just to clarify, would you be having a public hearing that night, or just receiving the, receiving a report?
Information, is that right?
Yeah.
I believe. And then from that, we would determine which route we're gonna take, we're gonna move on to a public hearing and subsequent steps, all right?
Right, and we, we wanna, you know, when you're doing a text amendment, you wanna do the, the least amount of damage, right, possible, so I appreciate the board's concern.
Okay. All right, council, so at this point, the consensus to, uh, to ask the staff to set it, uh, for an informational hearing, bringing back some of the, uh, information that has been requested here tonight?
Not informational hearing, but just informational part of the meeting, that's not a hearing per se.
Well, yeah, maybe I should.
We're gonna be hearing it, but not a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, sir, okay. All right, um, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that, sure enough. Okay, uh, Mr. Trezenberg, I believe you're up, sir. Item five, text amendment request, U D O twenty oh five.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
Yes, uh, tonight we've got a group of, group of possible text amendments, so this one, this one is one that the planning department is, is sponsoring in conjunction with, uh, Mari's folks with downtown Garner Association, and so this, this is one that we've talked about in a little more big picture, so she hasn't drafted any specific language for this, nor have we yet either, but, um, we think this one is fairly easy to explain and, uh, one that we can have language ready by, for a public hearing on November seventeenth, if y'all are comfortable. Um, currently, townhomes are in allowed use in the central business district, but they would be held to the same standards as townhomes throughout the rest of our jurisdiction, uh, so it's very suburban in nature, where you look to have a fairly large front setback, because most of those are gonna be, um, garage loaded, and I've given you a few, a few pictures of what's available, what can be built under the current ordinance, and so this picture here, in the upper, whoa, in the upper left, um, that's typically the kind of townhome development that you're gonna see in most parts of Garner. Uh, you've got the building setback fairly far from the street, uh, it allows for at least twenty to twenty-two feet of, of driveway length behind the sidewalk, so that you can fit a car, uh, in that driveway without impeding pedestrians, um, so it's, it's a much different look and feel, um, very dominated by curb cuts and driveways. The other option that we have, um, worked with a couple of developers to do is where, and you'll see these on the right, where they're not fronting on a street, um, they're actually fronting on green space, um, so if you can think back to, for example, George's Landing, um, they had some townhomes that were, the garages were in the back, uh, they had an alley that served those, but the townhomes themselves actually fronted on green space. Um, and so that's what you see here, um, so that's, that's, it's, it's a different look and feel, but that is one that you can accomplish, uh, under the current ordinance as things are today. What we can't do is have the townhomes closer up to the street, so if there's a public street still, we can't move that, that townhome closer under the current, current rules and regulations. So this drawing down here in the lower left kind of shows you, you've got the, the garages and an alley in the back, just like the ones that are, uh, fronting on the green space, um, but the difference here again is that you do have the public street out front. And so in your CBD, as we've talked about, we wanna be very judicious with our use of the limited area that we have, um, and try to give it a little more of that urban style feel. And so here's just a few examples that I pulled from the internet, um, some of these are in Raleigh, some of them are just in this, in the southeast, um, but you see here, the townhomes themselves are much closer to the sidewalk, there's a much, uh, more manicured kind of front yard, less lawn, um, more foundation and garden style treatments, you still have your street trees, though, um, along the street to kind of give you that, that walkability feel. But this is the type of, of townhome development that we think is more appropriate for the central business district, and we do have, um, a developer who owns some property on Pearl Street, uh, and some of the other streets back there that is interested in pursuing this type of, of development, um, and so we think it's a positive and a good thing that would bring some positive change for the central business district. Uh, so again, if this is something that, uh, you can be supportive of and would like to see us move forward, um, we can draft up what should be a fairly short, um, text amendment package just to address the setbacks specifically in the CBD, um, for now, and we may choose through the U D O rewrite process to extend this to, um, other more dense mixed use areas, once we get those rules written for new kind of mixed districts, um, but that's kind of what we're looking to accomplish, and so Mari here as well, and we can answer any questions or concerns that you have. Um, there is one thing that came up in the last week or so, that I, that I'll throw in, not to confuse things, hopefully, but, um, we would like to ask you, secondly, for your permission to expand the scope of this case, um, so we don't have to potentially add another case for something that I think would be fairly non-controversial, and that would be to add indoor entertainment as a permitted use in the central business district. Um, currently, indoor gyms and indoor kinds of sports facilities are already allowed, as well as, um, and movie theaters are actually allowed with a special use permit. Indoor entertainment kind of falls in between those two, and so I think, just in the fact of us doing some of these previous amendments, this is just something that we didn't see, um, but to us, it makes sense based on those other uses that are already allowed, um, to go ahead and approve indoor entertainment as a appropriate use for the CBD as well. Um, so we would just expand the scope to include townhomes and indoor, and indoor entertainment in the CBD, and draft the package for a public hearing in that fashion, if you all are open to that.
Okay, uh, thank you. Interesting depictions there, I think, sure enough. All right, uh, council, uh.
I'll start off.
Go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Uh, I like this, uh, and I think all of us do a lot of traveling, and especially in some of the, uh, older neighborhoods now, you look over around, uh, go over there around, uh, Peace University, we own Peace University, all that back area used to be, you see this type of housing, it's very popular, uh, it's kind of what's going on today, people, they work, or they're in school, they come home, they want momentum, it gives you that walkability, it gives you a tight knit on a neighborhood, and especially in a, in a business environment, it would definitely fit in. I, uh, I'm totally behind this, I think this would be a great opportunity, I really do, and, uh, what's being presented, and I know where you're looking at over there, it'd be a perfect fit in that, that great area, because I had opportunity to drive through there, and, uh, I think it will certainly start some, some positive trends, but, uh, it's, it's where we're going nowadays, and, and it looks good, I think it's a natural fit, and we are adjusting in our growth to, to meet the needs, and I think it'd be a perfect need, and I would, I would strongly support something like this.
About getting us into the weeds, it, I'm, I'm, illuminate me a little bit, you, what, what area are you talking about, you said you?
Well, there's some business areas up there in, in the historic Garner area, that would, that would be good.
Yeah, across from the depot, off the museum.
Some depot, the Pearl Street building and the baseball fields, that whole stretch.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
I think it'd start a trend, a good trend, I really do.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Ms. Shington?
I concur.
Okay. Ms. Behringer.
Oh, yeah. Jeff, just real quick, these are similar to what we see in Renaissance Park off Tryon Road, is that correct?
I believe so, it's been a little bit since I've driven through there.
Really close to the street, but very well done.
Yes, they do, they do have some alley loaded product there.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I can support it as well.
Um, okay.
My, my only concern is we had the two other text amendments come before us that were already drafted out, that we had a chance to look at and hash through before we got here, so that we could be more efficient here. I'm not clear on what's being proposed, if this is a blanket text amendment for all of the central business district, just a particular project, I, what I, I'm, I don't, I'm afraid to give a broad brush to say, just build town, you can build townhomes, buy land downtown, then we reduce some of the density goals and verticality goals we've been talking about downtown, because now we're giving them the right to do this with that property. So without seeing the text amendment and what's being proposed, it's hard to know the scope and scale. Um, the other piece is, I know with being on the U D O rewrite committee, that there are gonna be, um, certain kinds of applications where there's sort of specialty projects that can get, um, variations and, and usually a larger scale projects is what it was designed, is being designed for, but something like this in, in a part of town where we're really trying to craft, um, not craft, but guide developers in a way that comes to our vision, something like as a one-off project that's substantial for that area, looks like that would be a good venue to come in, there's particular variances they would want, deviations, I'll say, from setbacks, and downtown is notorious for having setback issues and challenges, um, but I think they also need to be addressed kind of on a case-by-case basis in the grand scheme of what we're trying to do, um, because I know there are certain parts of downtown where they're grandfathered in, footprint, you know, setbacks, there's setbacks this big downtown in some places, sometimes we want to maintain those, and, and that's acceptable. Um, so I guess my two, two concerns, not having the text here to look at before we go to a public hearing, and not knowing the scope and scale, and then, you know, the U D O right, is this, is that mechanism we're building into the U D O rewrite appropriate for this type of project, where we wouldn't necessarily to, need to amend, we could just use a different vehicle and say, hey, here's this very specific project, and this is how it fits into all the other stuff we're doing, without giving carte blanche to developers to go in there.
So, so a couple of things, um, so townhomes are already, like I said, they're, they are already permitted in the CBD, so really, this is just a matter of setting different form guidelines for them, um, so that they're.
They're not permitted.
They could do, they could do these as a, a more suburban style setback, but that's really not the aesthetic that we have as a vision for downtown, I think is what, what you would say, not to speak for her.
Now, for townhomes aren't sufficient.
Right.
So that we don't, we permit them, but we really don't, because they don't fit, we'd have to make enough adjustments to setbacks, to where the current setbacks for downtown, for townhomes, wouldn't work sometimes.
Right, so, so they still would work. We, we've, with this one particular part, um, group of parcels that we've looked at, they can do it the way the ordinance currently sets it up. That's not ideally how we would want them to do it, um, so that was kind of our purpose for coming with this, is because we prefer them to do it this way, um, so it's really just a matter of adjusting the setbacks, um, to allow for it. Um, and while the variance sounds attractive, um, because they can do it the other way, um, then there really is no site-specific reason for granting the variance in that case, um, because there's nothing really peculiar about the property that would require them to have the variance, um, so that's why we kind of felt.
Let's, let's, let me go on around. Um, okay.
Being a part of what, what, what was once the G R A, uh, this is a, a dream coming true here. Um, I, I don't have an issue with it, I'm just glad to see the progress and the interest of developers in the area, and bringing a product like this to the area, I believe, would be a definite plus, uh, in the, in the, uh, in the downtown program, as we move, as we move forward. Uh, so the question tonight is, to prepare the language, uh, is that what you asked? Prepare the language for a public hearing?
That's, that's the way I read the recommendation here, and Jeff can confirm that, I guess.
Yeah, so I think, again, to go back to the process for it, if it's town-sponsored, it didn't necessarily require it, and we didn't think that it was gonna be that all involved to have the specific language at this point, but if you want to have that,
But if you want to have that before you want to go to a public hearing, we're more than happy to do that. But otherwise, if, if you are comfortable with the concept, I think it's a fairly limited scope in terms of just setting out some alternative setbacks for the CBD, and that's pretty much the extent of it.
Okay. Did you get yours answered?
Oh, yes. I'm comfortable with the concept.
Okay, okay. I've heard at least four council members who seem to want to move forward. Mr. Dallinger, I give you another moment or two.
Just, I'm not really clear on, on what's going to come before us at the public hearing. And is it going to be broad, or is it going to be narrow? And again, I, I just don't know. I mean, we can have a public hearing, and I can address it at the public hearing. I can do that, too. But the sooner I can see something, the more I can get informed and get questions answered before that point.
And we would, and we would have to have that language drafted to meet the two-week-in-advance requirement, so that it's actually out there. So at a bare minimum, it would at least be two weeks in advance of that public hearing.
Mr. Maker, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
You know, I think since the majority are supporting this, you know, it's always been in the historic Garner, or the, some always call it the Old Garner area. As you go past that, in that same area down toward the end where the church is on the corner, there's a lot of rundown houses. And we, for years, we wanted to get somebody to come in there and really make that a real nice area. And, and, and yes, there's a lot of older houses that are just about sitting on the street, so the, this thing has already started in one way or the other. But I think it would really open up great opportunities for that whole Garner area down there, because I think this would truly start a trend, and it will make it very unique, especially those houses on the top left here. I really like those. So, but it's up to the developer how they're going to do that. But I think it will help that area in its entirety to develop in a, in a very nice place, it's comfortable, and make it a good family environment.
Okay. To kind of bring this full circle. So Jeff, in my understanding, just as is stated in the agenda here, you're asking the council to consider setting a public hearing for November 17. Okay.
But you'll send, counsel, based off the two weeks, you'll send counsel a copy of the proposed ordinance by the third. That's two weeks before, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would think so.
All right, Mr. Dallinger? Is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Counsel, want to formally vote on that, or, no? Okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Treesenberg, you had a part two, I think.
Yeah, and again, the indoor entertainment is just simply adding a, a mark to the use table. So if you're okay with that, well, that'll be part of the draft as well.
Well, what's considered indoor entertainment? I think a lot of things that are entertainment inside, I don't know if you want, where you want them. Is it specific?
A, so it doesn't include sexually-oriented businesses. Those are a separate category. It does overlap with indoor gyms and indoor sports. But it could include things like just event halls, entertainment like that. So that's pretty much it.
Yes, I think there's growing interest in having event spaces in downtown. The development that's happening on Ran Mill Road, one of their primary uses, is going to be a wedding venue, event space. I've heard from other property owners that they're interested in doing something similar. So I think this will give us some flexibility for folks that want to do something, you know, that might have some flexibility, flexibility in and of itself, but we don't necessarily know exactly what that is right now. So I, I think we're going to see more of that. But we do have a immediate project that this will benefit and help us keep, keep them moving forward.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. So I believe you have your, the staff has their instructions. We'll hear back from you on the 17th. And obviously, per current practice, some information will be out prior to that. Probably by the third, did we say? Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Item six on the agenda, Mr. Town Manager, November pending agenda.
Basically, for information, just going to be our standard list of what's coming up. I don't really have anything to present, just know that it's subject to change here and there. So unless there's any specific questions about any of it.
Just one, if, this is, I'm glad you're, we're doing this now. It's really very, very helpful. Would be additional to add the next council meeting after the work session?
We, we're going to do that.
Okay, because I know if there are pending items that are coming from Planning Commission, it's good to land those and time those out.
Oh, Jeff is gone. Jeff recommended that.
Okay, great.
After we put this one out, he recommended we do that. So yes, that, that'll be included on the next one. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the Town Manager?
No, I'll say this, and one of the ones, item we discussed our last meeting, which was a, a public hearing, which is going to be coming forward with a project on Old Stage Road. I talked to Jeff yesterday about that specifically, and it's been moved to the first meeting in December.
Okay.
Because we thought it had been moved to the 17th of November, but now it's been moved to the first meeting in December.
It is December the 7th.
I talked to John, I talked to John, I talked to Jeff, I talked to both of you yesterday.
That's what caused Jeff to recommend that we add the first meeting of the following month, if we're now going to add time between Planning Commission out. So he, but as Mr. Dickerson said, he, he recommended that after we had put this one out for prelocation to you.
Okay. Any other questions for the manager on that, item six? He was information. Okay. Mr. Manager, you're still up then, if we're at I or E?
Have Mr. Hodges cover the, the bus rapid transit timeline?
So on your previous pending agenda, you had an item scheduled for tonight that was to, to hear an update on the locally-preferred alternative, or LPA, for bus rapid transit. Since we originally had that scheduled, we've had a little bit of a change in schedule. The, we are working with NC DOT to get them to further help analyze the crossing of, what you may remember from that presentation, as an extension of Wilmington Street to cross Tryon Road just to the west of the South Saunders Street intersection. And because we are getting them to do some traffic analysis there, we were not ready to bring back the additional information for council to consider whether, which route the council wanted to endorse. As you may remember, if we endorse a route that goes straight across there and want to add regular travel lanes, there may be some cost for the town to bear that is outside of the bus rapid transit. Raleigh has, City Council has decided that they are going, they have endorsed the Wilmington Street extension, so where Wilmington flies over now and connects back to South Saunders. There'd be, you may recall a map where that continued further over, and a new Wilmington Street came south and used Grinnell Street to, to cross Timber. City Council of Raleigh has adopted that as their locally-preferred alternative. So what we can now do, that gives enough clarification for Raleigh to submit a preliminary design application to the Federal Transit Administration with a timeline for coming back and determining the southern alignment. The reason that's important is, once that application is in, project development costs can start, be cost-shared with federal dollars. So rather than wait to get the traffic study back from DOT and, and delay that further, we're moving ahead with a project development application to Federal Transit Administration. We will then include a timeline that will, that will come back to Garner, select the southern leg of the route, and then we'll put a final application for project development in with FTA. So it's really just to, to update you that we have had a delay in the, in the schedule for selecting it, but we are moving ahead with project development, so that we can get some of the cost shared. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have about that.
Question for John?
Yeah. So they've chosen the extension flyover, and that means our routes are to come straight down. And that would be probably cost-shared, but if we went back to 401, we would, that would not. Is that sort of general rule of?
It, it would be cost-shared only if we added regular travel lanes. There is an option that at Tryon, you could potentially have just a BRT route that crossed and came down into North-South Station. And if there were no general travel lanes added, then that would be borne under the transit funds. The other option, as you said, could be to come out and come onto 401. And for that short of a distance, it really doesn't make a dramatic effect. One of the other things that is an option is to come out and actually take a right on Tryon and make a left movement at Junction Boulevard and circle back around by Junction. And so there's, there's an option that I think either way does not really dramatically impact, it does not dramatically impact the service to Garner. The biggest thing would be, to go straight across, we'd really need the, the participation of two property owners. And they don't really know enough about the project to understand whether they want to commit multimillion, multimillion dollars' worth of, of real estate, which is totally understandable. So I think either way, Garner's going to have a successful route in this. It's just a matter of which one gives us the most redevelopment opportunities down the road.
And to refresh my memory, so it comes down, and then it would circle around Garner Station Boulevard, then back up, right?
Yes. And so a couple of things could happen. If we build a station in Garner Station, it could be that the BRT bus itself actually terminates there, and then something circulates down to Perser, to the Walmart. That's one of the highest-traffic locations in the Raleigh bus system. That, that may be a circulator, that it may be different than the BRT bus.
Oh, really?
Or may not. We don't know that part yet. But the BRT will get to North-South Station with service to Perser, one way or the other.
Okay. Any other questions for John? Thank you for that explanation.
Yes, sir.
Sure enough. Okay. Believe by my calculation, we finished all the numbered items on the agenda and the manager's report.
That was it.
I'm sorry?
That was it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm saying we finished those. And so I'm prepared to go to council reports. So I'll start with Mr. Matthews here.
Nothing this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Singleton?
Nothing this time either.
Okay. Go to Ms. Behringler, excuse me, Mr. Singleton, excuse me, Mr. Dallinger. Sorry.
How dare you?
Yeah. It's getting late at night.
We know who you are.
No, just, again, I'm just glad that the town works with the county to set up early voting here. Avery Street has had really high numbers this year compared to historic years. So it's just great that everybody's using the opportunity to make sure we have that in future. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Vance?
Oh, yes. Just a few things that were held over from the last, the last meeting we had. First of all, to say, several weeks ago, the police, our Garner Police engaged with the community and churches within the area to develop relationships, to get to know each other. And I personally believe that it was a great event, a great start, and one that's going to continue on as we develop those relationships and get to know our, the Police Department, the Police Department gets, gets to know the community. So that I believe that was a success and look forward to it continuing. And, and as we all know, COVID has been devastating the area. And the, the local organizations have been coming together to help those who are in need, who have lost jobs, who need food. And, and I know that all have been doing a great job. But I'd like to say that one that I know in particular that's been doing a great, a great job also, let's see, going beyond, but beyond, in my opinion, has been the Community of Hope. They have been, they did not cease work. They stayed active even from the beginning of COVID to, to right now, and they are still serving the community well. So if you know folks who need some assistance with food, things of that nature, I would say contact the Community of Hope. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. And I want to mention just a couple, two or three things. I'll be brief. This is sort of carryover business. I thought it would be only appropriate to maybe put together a small committee to consider appropriate, excuse me, an appropriate way to memorialize the late Mayor Ronnie Williams. And so I've asked Mayor Pro Tem Behringler and Councilmember Singleton to maybe work with the Town Manager to look at current policies and, and maybe bring back a recommendation regarding their thoughts about a way to recognize the former mayor. So I want to thank them for their service, and they'll be meeting sometime quite soon. I'm sure most of you saw an announcement today, by the way. It's not just strictly Amazon here, but I saw where Amazon's announced they're going to hire 1,400 people, seasonal workers in the Triangle area. So that's not just here, but they're ramping up. And certainly, that will impact the hiring some here in the Garner area. And the only other thing I mentioned, I think everybody's aware of this, the Chamber Connect conference is now, is on. Yeah, I guess it's being done virtually. I missed the first session, but the next session, I believe, is Thursday. Is that right, John?
Thursday, 10 o'clock, I think.
Thursday, 10 to 11:15. Anyone who's already registered should receive it, have received an email with the link to join. And the Chamber did go ahead and register any of the council members who had not expressed an explicit interest, just so you had that. If you do not have an, an email from the Chamber, or do not get one by Wednesday, let me know, and we will make sure you've got it. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. I did forward an email last week for the link to the video from the first week that happened while you were in special session. There was some confusion, though, because there was a graphic, the connect graphic in the middle of the email is actually the link to that video. And several people told me that they did not understand that that was to be clicked on for the link to the video. So look at, look at an email from me last week that I forwarded from the Chamber, if you want to watch that video back and click on the connect graphic in the middle of the email.
That sounds like something I might would have done, but I didn't, so I didn't see that. But anyways, okay. Those, that's, that's all I have. And so to finish up tonight, I will entertain a motion that we go into closed session based on the General Statute site that I gave at the beginning of the meeting. I can re-quote those if I need to. I asked our attorney to, to state those statutes. Do we need to do that again?
That's North Carolina General Statutes, Section 143-318.11, subsection A, 3 and 6.
Some move, Mayor.
Okay. Probably, our motion is seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and there is no opposition. So I'm going to declare that we move from open session to closed session. We can move to the other. The council's back in regular session. Council went into closed session to receive a report and information from the Town Manager regarding legal matters related to one of our town buildings. The, the council took no specific action, but received the information. The second matter that the council heard during closed session had to do with a personnel issue. Received a report from the Town Manager. And Town Manager was instructed to take any appropriate action, and the council did not take any formal vote. All right. Motion to adjourn?
The move.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Stand adjourned.